So, get this show on the road? Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council Successor Agency, the Re-Development Agency for the City of San Carlos, the April 8th, 2013 meeting. Tonight, we're going to have a Pledge of Allegiance, and it's going to be led by Boy Scout Troop 321. Dominic Keenan is going to supervise. So, Mr. Keenan, floor is yours.
May the audience please rise. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. I think I can use you. Why don't you come on up here and just help me run this thing? This'll be good. All right, next item on the agenda is changes to the Order of Agenda. Anyone have any changes? City manager, staff?
No changes from staff.
Anyone from the desk?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Rubens, report from closed session.
There were no reportable items from the special meeting closed session, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council number, item number four, Council Communications and Announcements. Mr. Gocott?
I just have one. I'm just wanting to let people know that on, I believe it was Sunday morning, I went for a run over on Redwood Shores, and as I made my way over the freeway on Holly Street, there were about six guys out there cleaning up the freeway interchange. And if anybody's ever wondered why we have one of the cleanest-looking freeway interchanges on the 101, it's because the Lions Club goes out there on Sunday mornings like that on occasion and cleans it up. And that's who I saw out there, and just wanted to commend that particular service club for their volunteerism.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I, my wife and I enjoyed very much going to the Lions Club of San Carlos 75th Anniversary Celebration that they had the other weekend, and it was well-attended. There were quite a few recognitions given out, one by our very own mayor, as a matter of fact, who did a fine job following the cow.
Yeah, we won't go there.
We won't go there. But anyway, the Lions is a great club, and it was nice to be able to participate them and with them in their 75th year anniversary.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Klapper?
I have nothing today.
Collins?
I just want to report, I attended a couple of meetings. One was a Grand Boulevard Task Force a couple of weeks ago, and also the Caltrain Modernization Working Group, which is working on electrification. And I'm happy to report that that program is moving right along, and we are looking at about six years or so before we have electrified trains coming, running up and down the peninsula.
Okay, I have a couple of things. I noticed in the paper, the San Jose Mercury News had an article about a San Carlos young man, 12-year-old, if I can say this right, and I apologize if I don't, Tuvia Bergson-Michelson or Michelson, probably Michelson, for the second, won the 2013 California Geographic B for the second time on Friday. And he's going to be going to the Nationals on May 22nd, and it was his third time in the state championship. And like I said, he won two years ago. So, we wish him the best, and hopefully, he will be successful. He's a sixth grader, and he knows, and you don't just have to know where things are, apparently. You have to know, it's about 20 percent of the questions focused on the United States, the other 80 percent dealt with the rest of the world. And it's not just about maps. You have to know about exports, population, what happens. So, anyway, wish him all the best. Second thing is, I wanted to announce that this coming Saturday, the 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00, there'll be a Volunteer Expo at the Adult Community Center. It's a great spot to go and see what all kinds of opportunities there are to volunteer in San Carlos. And again, it's from 10:00 to 2:00, Saturday, this coming Saturday, the 13th, Volunteer Expo. And the last thing I'd like to announce is that also on Thursday, this coming Thursday evening at Hiller Museum, there's going to be a memorial service for Randy Royce, our former mayor who passed away. So, I, again, wanted to make sure that that was publicly noticed. It has been in the newspapers and around, but I just wanted to make sure that I repeat it one more time. Starts at 5:30 on Thursday evening at the Hiller Aircraft Museum. And I think that's it. Mr. Gocott, yes?
Your having said a couple of times there about things being in the paper reminded me of something I also wanted to mention. There was an article in the paper about all of us regarding our Form 700s, and I did want to let folks know because it made an issue with my 700 form, saying that I had investments in Cisco, but it wasn't clarified what that investment was. I was going to write to the editor and let him know that I owned Cisco, but that's not really true, at least not in any great, great amount. No, when, when we fill out those forms, you're supposed to mark a little box about if it's a stock or a bond or whatever, and I inadvertently did not on that particular one, mark that it was a stock holding. And then there was also a question about, I think it's called Frontier Communications, and it said that I didn't put how much I owned, and that's because when I, I put it down, and then I realized it doesn't fall into the category of 2,000 to 10,000, it's, it was actually some kind of spinoff, and it was, it's probably worth about $7. So, if anybody's wondering, I just thought I'd clarify all that. Thank you.
You could sell that for a loss.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gocott. Okay, number five, 5A, consideration of appointing a council member to the Blue Ribbon Task Force Committee regarding our garbage rates. I volunteered for that job, and it was a good first meeting, but unfortunately, they have now changed the dates of when we meet. And when we are, the new date, this conflicts with another situation that I have that I'd already committed to previously months ago. And it'll be every month like that, as long as they keep it on the fourth Wednesday.
Are you going to make us guess what the date is so we can figure out if it works with our schedules?
Absolutely, going to make you, it's the fourth, it's the fourth Wednesday, and it's basically going to meet, I think, only two more times, the most three, but I believe just two more and, actually, three more times, April, May, and June. And it's the fourth Wednesday, and it's at 6:00 o'clock at the City Hall in Redwood City. And when it was the third Wednesday, it worked out fine, but, for me, but the fourth Wednesday does not. So, I'm looking for a volunteer.
I could do that if no one else is interested, it'd be fine.
Anyone else? Mr. Gocott? Okay.
Gone, gone, okay.
Do we need a, Mr. Rubens, do we need a vote on that?
Yes, you should have a motion.
Can we have a motion?
I move that we select Councilmember Gocott to represent us at the Blue Ribbon Task Force Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It moved and seconded, per discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, all right, thanks. Mr. Gocott, appreciate that. If you have any questions later on on what we did the first meeting, let me know. We'll try to get you the minutes. I think there are some minutes out there. Okay, moving on. Item six, Presentations, Presentation of Proclamations to Dominic Keenan and Truby Raychiopi, I'm not sure, or Raychiopi? I butchered it, I'm sure, but it'll be corrected. Boy Scout Troop 321 upon receiving their Eagle Scout Awards. So, I think Truby is not with us, but I'll come down, and we'll talk to Dominic. Okay, this is something that's just terrific. Come on, let me step over here. Dominic's fine, thank you. Getting an Eagle Scout Award, I never got that far. This is really, really a big deal. And the Boy Scouts play a great, of America play a great force in our, in this town, and a lot of young men, their lives and so on. And you should be extremely proud to, to receive this. I'm not going to read all the whereas's because I basically just went through what they are, but we just want to make sure that this eighth day of April, that we recognize you and give you a proclamation congratulating you on this award. So, Dominic, congratulations.
Thank you.
Traditionally, traditionally, what we do is we ask you to explain what your project was. Do you mind doing that?
My project was at the United Church of Christ. I did a landscaping thing with their plants. I put in some new flowers, and I basically helped them a lot by getting them some new plants because the old plants were dying. Yeah.
What school do you go to?
I go to Sarah High School, and I'm a sophomore.
Good school, good school. Great, congratulations. So, anyway, here's your proclamation, and best of luck, and again, very, very honored. Take care. All right, thank you. And John, John Corpus is going to accept this, and I apologize for, is it Raciopi or how is it said?
Raciopi.
Raciopi, I should have said Cheek. I'm Italian, I should know that. I'm sorry, I apologize. Truby, Raciopi III also achieved his Eagle Scout, and John Corpus is a leader, scout leader in the area, and he's going to accept it for us. And do you know what Truby did for his thing, John?
He, he helped the softball league at...
Carolina?
Carolina, thank you. He built a shelving for the storage facility for him.
Great, okay, terrific. Do you know where it goes to school?
It goes to Carmont.
Goes to Carmont?
Yeah.
What year, is he a sophomore or a junior?
He might be.
I think he's a senior.
Great, terrific, another great school. That's great. Well, John, I'd give you this, and I'm sure Truby will get it, and again, please give him our congratulations from everybody in the city. Thanks a lot.
May I make a note? Between, between the two of them, they, between Dominic's project and Truby's project, there were somewhere around 300 hours of community service involved, and so I just want to...
Terrific. Yeah, the community service, which is sort of hidden behind the project, is what really, what, what really is wonderful for the City of San Carlos. So, again, Dominic and Truby, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great. Okay. By the way, folks, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to, so, just giving you the heads up.
Yeah.
Thank you, congratulations. But go home and watch us on TV, okay? All right, we move into item seven, Public Comment. This is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the Council on items not on the posted agenda this evening? Seeing none, okay, we'll move on. Item eight, Approval Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Though we know separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Items to be removed tonight or changed around? Mr. City Manager, did you have one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the staff has one item, item eight D, the minutes of the Special Joint City Council Planning Commission of March 18th. We received some comments and requests from the public late on Friday to make some amendments to those minutes. I believe our redlined version is in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
Like to point that out. With those changes, if, if the council's comfortable, you could go ahead and approve the amended minutes.
All right, and we'll see how that's going to go. Is there any other items?
L.
I'm sorry.
L.
L, okay. All right, any other items? All right, we have a, a lot of things on the agenda, or two large items on the agenda, so I would like to put those off to make sure we have enough time to discuss the development agreement and, and the sewer tonight. So, we'll put those off, but I'd like a motion for the approval of the other items on the consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we approve items eight A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K of the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we will get to those other two at the end of our meeting. So, we're, item number nine, Public Hearing, Consideration of Adopting Three Resolutions Approving the 657 Walnut Street Relocation Plan, Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Disposition and Development Agreement for the Wheeler Plaza Project, and number three, Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Cooperation Agreement with the San Carlos Successor Agency for the Wheeler Plaza Project. Mr. Savay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Tonight, staff is recommending, as you noted, a number of actions by the council and the successor agency, and what I'd like to do is provide you with an overview on where we are and how we got here today. I'll hand over the presentation to Mark Sawicki, our Economic Development and Housing Manager, about halfway through. And I'd also like to make a few introductions. We have John McMorrow with Silverstone Communities, our development partner, and his attorney, Jerry Ramiza. We have Jim Simon, our Economic Development Advisor with RSG, and we have our special legal counsel, Matt Kudrowski, here to answer any questions as they arise. Ideas for doing some kind of a development project at Wheeler Plaza have been talked about at least since the late 1990s as part of a Citizens Advisory Committee on Downtown Parking, and that's really perhaps where the development idea started. And the city began then after that acquiring properties for a future development. The idea of a Wheeler Plaza development was made part of our economic development plan, and it was listed as part of the top five objectives in that economic development plan, and it is there today. The city then selected the developer, Silverstone Communities, to partner with the city to explore the idea further, and since 2009, we've had a number of community meetings, all very well-attended, and the intent of those community meetings was to get community input and explain where we were in the process. And really, we, we started meeting with the community even before the city or the developer put pen to paper. The city since then has acquired two additional properties, and the project reached a significant milestone in 2012, October of 2012, when the EIR was certified by the City Council based on a recommendation from the City Council. And we've also presented the concept at Hot Harvest Nights, at the recent Government Affairs Session, San Carlos Rotary, and the Junior Maintenance most recently. Well, there's been a history of interest in Wheeler Plaza. There are other reasons to pursue this development, and many view the downtown as the cultural and social heart of our community, and change certainly shouldn't be taken lightly. This is also a unique opportunity to enhance our downtown's vibrancy and vitality and to improve the local economy. This can be viewed as a catalyst opportunity for the continuing success and resiliency of our downtown. So, through mixed-use development, there's a potential to add life to the area while maintaining the character and integrity of the downtown as well. So, downtown mixed-use projects have just that, a mix of, of uses. On the ground floor, you might have retail, commercial space. On the upper floors, typically, there's residential office or condominiums, apartments. The intent is to offer renewed vibrancy for the retailers who benefit from having this active customer base in the downtown within walking distance of all the good things that our downtown has to offer, the retail shops, the services, the grocery store we have. These developments also attract residents who prefer a more urban lifestyle, or somebody who wants an alternative to a single-family house, or someone who wants to move out of their home because the kids have moved out and they want to move down where the action is in our community. So, this has taken a bird's-eye view of Wheeler Plaza, and I'll just walk you through to orient you to Wheeler Plaza. We have Laurel Street here to the north, and San Carlos Avenue, Walnut Street, and Cherry Street, so they're bounded by these streets. And the blue line represents the boundary of Wheeler Plaza. These properties were most recently acquired, the former Foodville site and the former furniture store, and these other two properties were acquired earlier with city housing, RDA dollars. And so, the intent was to get a rectangular site, which is better for construction, better for development of this nature, and better for underground and above-grade parking. This green area you see here is for potential senior housing site in the future, and this blue area represents the service access from Cherry Street that would go through. There's 187 parking spaces in the Wheeler Plaza site now, and they're all free public parking. In terms of the development program, it's about almost 2.4 acres, 108 dwelling units are proposed. They would be condominiums, about 9,800 square foot of retail along San Carlos Avenue, 427 parking spaces in total, and as I noted, there's 187 parking spaces in the Wheeler parking area now. The intent is to add more parking to that, add about 50 parking spaces in the parking structure, and then have the residential parking below grade, so all the residential parking for the units above would, would be below grade. The Laurel Plaza project would really be somewhat of a separate project. It would be used for valet parking, and I'll, I'll note that on the site plan coming up. There would be about 8,000 square feet and two floors at Laurel Street and a 6,500 square foot public gathering plaza. Cherry Street property, that affordable housing, senior affordable housing complex would be about 30 senior affordable housing units. This is the ground floor of the development. Again, Walnut Street, Cherry Street, Laurel Street, and San Carlos Avenue. This would represent the ground floor of the parking garage, and you'd be able to drive in and access those public parking spaces right off of Walnut Street, and then exit your vehicle and go out, and you could either get to Laurel Street or San Carlos Avenue or back towards City Hall, Walnut Street. So, you'll be able to walk right out and, and get into the downtown area. This would be that service alley that would still service all these buildings. You'd have your loading and pickup areas at the rear of the building, and the width of the San Carlos Sister City Alley would be widened here as well. This is that 9,800 square foot of, of retail that I mentioned earlier, and another important component is this pedestrian pathway or paseo that would go through the middle of the building. We felt that it would be important to maintain that pathway as it goes all the way from City Hall Park, and the city required it at the time of this other Pacific hacienda development, so you can walk through a very nice landscaped walkway and come right out here. And so, this is more of an informal pathway now, but we believe that it was important to retain this so people could walk from City Hall Park and continue on that path either to Laurel, Laurel Street or on to the train station. This is that Cherry Street Senior Affordable Housing Complex area. You'd be able to access the underground parking for the residential right here, go down below. And this is the Laurel Street, Laurel Plaza Development Project where the former Foodville building would be knocked down. It would be used for valet parking during construction to take, make relief for these businesses here. And then, after that was done, a two-story, the idea would be to have a two-story building here, a ground-floor retail restaurant perhaps, to activate this plaza, and then upper-floor incubator space, office incubator space. This is the, this is Walnut Street here, and here you have the basement level, and this would be the residential parking, approximately 190 parking spaces below grade. And then, one floor up, or this is actually the top floor, then the second level floor of the public parking garage. And you can see how it relates to the retail in here and here. Here's how the condos lay out. They lay out along Walnut Street here, and there's two private plazas that, it's sort of a U-shape, and the mass of the building is broken up here, so you get a very nice breakup in the building here. So, these would be private areas, there would be a public plaza down below, and then fronting San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street. And then, here's an upper, one of the upper floors, the top floor, a representation of the top floor. One of the things that we heard from the city council and the public was concern about the height of the buildings, particularly along San Carlos Avenue. So, early on in the process, those units were eliminated at the top floor along San Carlos Avenue and placed elsewhere, and now this is, instead of being 50 feet, it would be 40 feet, and looked like three stories along here, and it was taken back a little bit here as well. This is looking, this is an artist's rendering. You're standing at the corner of San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street, looking at the corner there. This is about where Hole-in-One Liquor is now. You'd have your Class A retail, a very high floor plate, a 16-foot floor plate, Class A retail here along the bottom, and as noted, there's the two floors of residential above, and so that fourth floor would be set way back so that the pedestrian, it would be not visible for the pedestrian. And as you're walking down Walnut Street, you see there's that small public plaza here, and there's the entrance to that paseo that I mentioned earlier, and this would be the parking garage. And then above there would be the, the private plaza area for the residents, and there's the residential access to the garage. And we're walking now further down Walnut Street. Here's closer look at the, at the plaza, public plaza, the paseo, parking garage, the upper area, and the residential above. And again, the driveway into the residential, this would be the driveway into the, to the public parking area. And then this is looking as if you were walking south on Laurel Street, and this is looking in, looking over to your right on Laurel Street as if you were coming from San Carlos Avenue on the right, so the Methos Restaurant is over here on the right, the former Foodville building, it used to be here. And the idea, as I noted, of this public plaza rose out of community members and that there was a strong desire for an amenity as part of any development that was done in, in the, in the project. So, the project has been planning for this since the beginning, and it's, it's been quite challenging to find this kind of a space, but it offers an opportunity to create this new downtown gathering space for users of all kinds, employees, residents, the lunch crowd, concerts, performances, and a place to meet neighbors. And it's also very close to the Caltrain Depot and Samtrans, so as you arrive in our downtown from there, you'll make the turn from San Carlos Avenue, and one of the first things you'll see is this large public gathering space, a very welcoming gateway into the, into the downtown. And then a restaurant, the idea is that a restaurant would be on the ground floor here to stimulate activity here night and day, and then you'd have an upper floor of incubator office space overlooking the plaza. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Mark Sawicki, who's going to talk about the, the economics.
Thank you, Mr. Savay.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The next couple of slides, if I can get to them. The next slides will look at the project economics, fiscal returns, and other community benefits. Working with our economic consultant, RSG, we currently estimate that the market sales value of the residential and condo, residential condominium and commercial space on San Carlos Avenue will yield approximately $72 million and will exceed the cost of construction enough to repay debt and provide a market rate or return for equity investors. If costs are greater without an increase in sale prices, the developer and equity investors would obviously earn less. If revenues are greater than $72 million and costs do not rise as significantly, the city may share in 8% of the excess proceeds. That's under the terms of, of the disposition and development agreement. This break-even projection implies that the properties contributed by the city and the successor agency are transferred at no cost. Otherwise, the project would not be feasible. Why would the city and successor agency contribute the properties at no cost? Well, the successor agency is responsible for disposing of former RDA properties expeditiously and in a manner aimed at maximizing value under the law. Also, properties that are or will serve a governmental purpose may be conveyed to the appropriate government entity. If the two successor properties are sold, they might yield about $3.6 million, and that would be split among the various taxing entities. If the Wheeler project is built, it will add $70 million or more to the assessed value roll. The taxing agencies will then generate much more in property tax revenue over time than if they liquidated right now. The city received two housing assets from the RDA following dissolution. If the Wheeler project proceeds, the city would generate $3.5 million to the Housing Trust Fund, which can then be leveraged with county, state, and federal funds to produce a greater number of affordable units than if we just sold those properties. It's hoped that this could be done at the adjacent site on Cherry Street. This table illustrates over 20 years the net fiscal impact to key local taxing agencies that receive residual tax payments from the successor agency and also have representation on the Oversight Board. They include the San Carlos Elementary, Sequoia High School, the Junior College, and the County. The top line represents their tax shares, and I apologize that the, I tried to get this as big as possible, but 20 years is a long time, I guess, to show a lot of numbers. In year one, there's an opportunity cost, what they've foregone by, by not selling the properties, that would, that would in, in effect be their investment in, in the Wheeler Plaza project. But every year thereafter, they'll have a net increase in property tax from the Wheeler project, and over 20 years, these become fairly significant sums. From an investment return standpoint, if you look at that investment of not selling the properties in the first year... the properties in the first year and then everything that they generate after, they would be getting a return of 17% to 27% on their so-called investment. The school districts get more because they also get impact fees, school district fees, development fees. From the city's perspective, the Wheeler project will first generate planning, building, and other development fees of more than $2 million right up front. And then over time, the new residents and the new commercial tenants will be producing sales, taxes, and fees. Also projected here is the city's share of new property tax revenue, although it's not clear at this time exactly how much of that will flow back to the city through the whole dissolution process, and what gets, what will it get shared with some other taxing entities before us. In summary, the city's looking at a general fund revenue over time that is more than eight times what it would have received from sale of the successor properties. It's also generating in Lufy's that are close to double the purchase value of the former RDA housing fund properties. It also receives a new parking structure of 27% more parking spaces, which we valued somewhere between six and eight million dollars, depending on which costs you associate with the parking structure versus the rest of the development. Over and above all that, there's a host of community benefits that do not have a direct fiscal impact to the city. Those benefits, as listed here, they include a new high-quality lead silver building in the downtown with Class A retail space that can attract premium retailers and restaurants. The project creates space for a public plaza and provides new housing options close to transit. Downtown customers will have 50 more parking spaces. The new residents will spend over $8 million, hopefully all of it in San Carlos. The project will result in 417 construction jobs and another 39 permanent jobs, and the elementary and high school districts will share over $600,000 in fees. Tonight's next step in moving Wheeler forward includes three actions for the city and one for the successor agency. We're asking the city to approve a relocation plan for the tenants at 657 Walnut, authorize the disposition and development agreement with Silverstone, our development partner, and for the city and successor to both execute a cooperation agreement to use the successor properties and some of the former RDA bond proceeds. And I'll describe each of these a little further. The relocation plan is required by California Relocation Assistance Law. The plan was prepared by RSG and distributed last December to each of the 657 Walnut tenants. All of them were advised of their rights to receive assistance from the city to find new homes. This includes moving costs as well as either down payment assistance or rent support equivalent to the difference between current and market rents for 42 months. Staff is not recommending any monetary relocation benefits be offered to the commercial tenants at the 1249 to 1265 San Carlos property. Each of these have been tenants for more than 10 years, and they all signed waivers of relocation benefits or acknowledged that they would not be eligible for benefits. All of them are month-to-month, and they receive, they, their rents are set at 25% to 45% below market rate for downtown. The collective annual discount to those tenants is $50,000 to $75,000. And after eight to 10 years, their cumulative benefits have been about two and a half to five times the amount that we otherwise would offer for relocation to a commercial The disposition and development agreement is the, is the, is the main agreement here. It sets out the overall scope and scale of development, the representations, warranties, and covenants of the city and the developer, the conditions that must be met before closing Vescro and conveyance of the properties. It also sets forth what actions or inactions would lead to termination of the agreement and the rights and remedies of the parties. The DDA does not approve the final project or entitlements and does not convey any property. It sets forth a schedule for performance for actions that would lead to a closing and transfer of the properties and subsequently to construction of the project. Among other things, it requires the developer to build the public parking structure and transfer that ownership interest back to the city. It provides for the developer to demolish the Foodville Building and use that site for temporary parking while the public parking structure is built. After that interim use, the city will own that property and can proceed with design of the public plaza. The cooperation agreement between the city and successor agency sets forth the successor's involvement in the Wheeler project. It includes the transfer of its only, of its only two remaining properties, one to the developer and one to the city, so that development can occur as contemplated under the DDA. It also commits the successor to provide up to $300,000 for relocation costs and up to $300,000 for environmental remediation costs related to the, to the dry cleaners, although the actual costs for each may be much less. Under the DDA, the city commits to conveying the properties without tenants and discloses and has disclosed contamination from the dry cleaners. Since these are legacy issues from RDA ownership, we feel it's appropriate to use remaining RDA bond funds to proceed, to cover these costs. The DDA is contingent on approval of the cooperation agreement by the successor and its Oversight Board and ultimately the State Department of Finance. The Dissolution Act, AB 1484, provides a path for successor agencies to sell or use properties and to spend remaining bond proceeds after they, after we have been issued a finding of completion by the state. Staff will be submitting a request for that finding of completion this week. The Oversight Board will be meeting on April 30th and will review the cooperation agreement if it's approved this evening. If the transfer of properties and use of bond money is approved, the developer will proceed with preparing more detailed project design plans and work with city staff to bring a final project proposal to the Planning Commission and the City Council. This could occur by later this year. If approved and entitled, demolition and excavation could begin by late summer, by late next summer, and parking structure could begin construction by fall of 2014. By spring of the following year, the public parking could be used while the residential construction continues above. Thank you for your consideration. Staff is available for questions, as well as our special legal counsel and economic consultant and the developer and his representation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sawicki. Questions for staff? Ms. Clapper?
Yes. So in, in looking at what we're looking at right now, up there was labeled previously as being the project site, and it shows the Cherry Street Senior Affordable Housing, but as I understand it, that's really not being covered in anything that we're being asked to review and potentially approve this evening. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm going to make sure nothing had changed.
We would be generating an in-Lufy that could help support that project, but we don't have ownership of those sites.
Okay, thank you. It's the only question I have right now.
Understand. Ms. Grokot?
So I wanted to find out the, are we asking questions on all three items here?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So it talks about in here the housing in Lufy, that no affordable housing will be built with this project, but instead there'll be a housing in Lufy paid. What is the intent for the housing in Lufy? You know, where do we intend to use that?
The intent with, to use it towards building an affordable senior project on Cherry Street. The, one of the properties is owned by Hip Housing, which is a partner with the city in affordable housing and actually manages the 657 Walnut property as well as some others in town. And then there is a property owned by, leased to Vision Care and owned by an individual who we've had discussions with about potentially acquiring and, and doing a larger development there. And if that were done, the, the access lane would be shifted east so that it's a straight shot all the way across from Cherry to San Carlos, and the development would occur where the lane currently exists.
So currently, so temporarily, we would lose the Hip Housing that's there now because some construction would have to go on.
If that development were to occur, we would have to temporarily relocate those residents and then relocate them back into the project.
And when we're, and when we're looking at the relocation agreement, that's what we're talking about, is those residences?
No, no. We're talking about the residents at 657 Walnut, which is the property just on the south side of the Wheeler Plaza parking lot that the, the redevelopment agency purchased in 2001.
How many tenants are in there?
There are four.
So we're just talking about relocating four?
Yes.
And those would just be relocated and that's it, they're, that's gone?
Yes.
So if we redevelop the Cherry Street, we'd have to do more relocation?
Yes, there's six units in that, in that building.
And is that, that's not included in the?
That is not included. That would be.
So where's the money come from for that?
From the, the in-Lufy, from other, other fees that we have in our Housing Trust Fund, which is currently about $2 million. And then whoever the developer is of that site would generate other funds either from the county, from the state, or from federal low-income housing tax credits. And that's how they would support the entire development through a wedding cake of, of funds, which is typically how affordable housing gets done.
So we lose four units of affordable housing at Walnut, and at Cherry, there's six units right now.
Correct.
How many units are envisioned to be built there at Cherry?
Yes.
30 units?
So we would make more efficient use of the, of the available land that's in that
So we're plus 20 units?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The current parking lot has 187 spaces, and at one point there was some, in a chart about the value of the finished parking garage, right? Which was being made as an argument, I guess, for why we would want to, at least in part, sell our property for essentially a dollar, right? But I guess what I'm looking at is what's, what would be the market value of a parking lot, an open-air parking lot with 187 spaces versus the value of a parking garage with 237 spaces?
The, well, the value of the land with the surface parking lot is whatever you can build on, on the lot, but the city would need to have abandoned all of that parking in order for something else to get built. What we're doing is getting back the equivalent number of parking spaces but creating value above it that everybody will share in that, in that value. So we're in effect selling the air rights above it, above it and getting back the same amount of parking plus an additional 50 spaces.
Okay, so the garage, the value of the garage is what with the 237 spaces? What was the figure given?
We estimated six to eight million dollars.
And we really don't have a figure then for, you know, I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Sawicki, is if, if the city was to go out, look for some land to build a surface parking lot and build it, you know, what's the valuation of that? There has to be some kind of valuation for purchasing the land, putting down the pavement, striping it, putting in trees and landscaping and curbs and so forth, everything that's there now. Needs improvement, of course. It's been allowed to get dilapidated, but still it would have some value.
It would be six to eight million dollars plus the cost of assembling and acquiring the land. So it would be in excess of six to eight million dollars to, to create a similar parking structure somewhere else in the city.
A Wheeler Plaza, an open-air parking, surface parking?
Well, parking structure, a lot of the, a lot of the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
He just wants a flat parking.
Yeah, if, what I'm saying is, is if we were to, you know, we were sitting up here and staff was coming to us and saying, you know, we really need some parking downtown, and so we need to put together, you know, however big of a parcel that is, let's say, you know, an acre and a half parcel or two-acre parcel, and we need to pave it and stripe it and put in trees and everything, that has to have some value, some value. So, you know, that's, to me, that's the only way to get a value, a number of how much is Wheeler Plaza worth to us is if we had to replace it.
Through the, through the mayor, if I can add, I think those are, I think we can try to go out and look and provide a range and an estimate. The thing that makes that very difficult is obviously, you know, we don't think that there in the downtown area is that kind of acreage that's currently vacant, so you'd be acquiring a building that you'd then be removing for the sake of providing that surface parking, and that's what makes it very hard to provide an estimate that depends on the value of the particular building that, that you're going to have to buy that really has no value to you because you're just going to knock it down and scrape it. So we could go out and look and try to find, you know, what we think would be an estimate for you and provide that to you either offline or at a future meeting.
Mr. Grokot, could I tag in there for a second?
Sure.
I wonder, if I understand where you're going with the question, I wonder if another way of looking at this is to say that we're starting with 187 parking spaces, we're ending up with 237. The real increase in value is 50 parking spaces. So another way of asking the question in terms of incremental value might be to say, what's the cost of building a 50-unit parking garage? I suspect it's not $6 million. The $6 million is for the whole 237, but we already have 187 of those. They're not in a parking garage, they're in a lot. So one could argue that, that if 237 is $6 million, then roughly the incremental 50 is worth a fifth of that, so it's worth about $1 million. So that the, the analysis ought not to credit the project with $6 million, it ought to credit it with like one.
Well, we can discuss that when we get, I'm just trying to ask questions of staff to get an understanding for discussion later.
I apologize. I was just trying to offer a different way to look at it.
You asked, and I said, sure, so it's fine. I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. The value of the, seems to me there's three parcels in a way, or actually two locations. There's the Laurel Street location where we had Foodville, and then there's the San Carlos Avenue location, if you will, just, you know, conglomerating all those buildings from Hole-in-One Liquor to the carpet, what used to be a carpet store. That's kind of the other part. And then the third part is the plaza itself along with the apartment building that you talked about. So the apartment building, we already, I guess we're including that, but that's a housing, the only thing we can do that with that is housing because it belongs not really to the city, but the city Housing Successor Agency, right? So we have to use it for housing.
And, and as well as the corner commercial building is a housing asset, even though it's their commercial tenants, it was purchased with housing funds.
The Hole-in-One Liquor and everything, and those, I guess there's Hole-in-One, Key Lock, whatever.
Yes, five tenants.
Five tenants. So that's housing as well.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, what I'm trying to get at is the value of all these properties, it seemed to be from your presentation, you're saying if you take how much money we spent buying all those things and consolidating all these properties versus what we could sell all those properties for if we just wanted to get out of the property acquisition ownership business other than our original parking lot. If we sold all those pieces, we would figure on making about $2.2 million.
Right, 1.7 of which would go into the housing fund.
Excuse me?
1.7 of that would go into the housing fund for sale of 657 Walnut and 1249 San Carlos. Those are housing assets, so the proceeds would go into the housing fund. What we're doing is turning them into an in-Lufy that's almost double.
So 1.7 million would, would go into the housing fund?
Right. And then we would only receive approximately $480,000 if that in residual payments for the sale of the other two properties by the successor agency.
The other two properties are what?
The Foodville and the Furniture Store. Those are, those are owned by the successor agency, proceeds of which need to get shared with all the other taxing entities.
So with those, we'd, we'd net about how much?
$480,000, we estimated.
Half a million. Okay. All right. And then I was, I'm a little confused, this is kind of a technical thing, but even in your presentation here, you said that by approving any of this, we're not, we're not approving a project, but we are, it seems like we are in a way. I mean, we're pushing it along because even when I'm reading the staff report on page three, it says what you said, that the purpose of the DDA, I'm looking at the, kind of the middle of the page there, implements the sale of property to Silverstone, contains the terms and conditions. The DDA does not, however, approve any land use entitlements, subdivision of property or building permits. or building permits for the construction of Wheeler Plaza. So I understand that in a technical sense, but then when I turn the page and look at the other side, kind of two-thirds down the page, following the conveyance of the site to Silverstone, the DDA calls for the development of a mixed-use building and surrounding landscape, Wheeler Plaza, so forth, with the following components. So it seems like by approving this, maybe not in specific terms, are we doing what's being said on page three, but in general terms, we are?
You are approving the expectation of what you want to see happen here. You still have opportunities to--
Good definition, so the expectation of what we want to see here.
Right, and so that both of the parties are well aware of what the expectation is. As you move through the process, there's going to be a series of completion deadlines. The developer will need to come back with more specific site plans. The exact numbers that you see here will probably not be the exact numbers by the end of the day. You may lose a couple of parking spaces, you may gain a couple of parking spaces, you may lose or gain a couple of units.
Okay. Very good. Let me just quickly go through here and see if I asked everything I wanted to ask.
You'll get another chance, I won't cut you off.
All right, go ahead, then, move on.
Charles?
I really only had one question. I think I know the answer to this, but there was a line here that says the access lane is contemplated to run underneath several residential units. You're not talking about the access lane that comes out on San Carlos Avenue, are you? Are you talking about it actually being under, going underground from, or coming out from underground towards San Carlos Avenue? I don't think so, but I just wonder why you use the word underneath?
The--
Is it used in, is it meant to be used in a different way?
The Sister City Lane is right now a much smaller alleyway in here. The existing building comes out almost as far as here, where I'm pointing on the screen.
Right.
What will happen is on the ground level, this will be a straight, it will be expanded so that trucks can exit out onto San Carlos Avenue. It will line up with the alleyway that's currently there. The first two floors of retail will be at this wall. Above that, the building will bulge out over Sister City Lane, so that more units can be built in here. That was, that was one of the things we did when we took the units off of the top, to try and still get some more residential units to make the project feasible. That was one of the value engineering things we did, was if by expanding over here, we could get some more units at the top, at the upper levels. If you look at the site plans for the residential levels, you'll see it kind of bounce out over there.
And as we get more detail, I suppose we'll be able to see a rendering of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Suwicky and Mr. Seve. Couple of simple questions first. During the phase when there's valet parking, where are the cars going to go? Since there obviously won't be room for one hundred and eighty-seven of them in the former Foodville location.
We will, probably the first order of business would be working with Samtrans, both for their parking garage that's within a block, as well as the railroad property along El Camino, to use and shuttle cars to either of those sites from the valet, as well as South Plaza, if there are, if that's not being, if that's still being underutilized, which it is today, so.
So that's, that plan remains to be worked out, basically?
Correct.
In detail, we just have some ideas.
Yes, there's been preliminary discussions, but not more than that.
Not nailed down, okay. One of the, one of the options that is in the materials concerns that potential boutique hotel. And as I understand it, it's anticipated that it might have something around fifty rooms associated with it. What would be the parking impact, the impact on the parking resources of that?
Hotels generally have a lower parking demand than residential units would, so what you would potentially lose in residential units, you would get a lot more hotel units because they're much smaller than the residential units. Each individual one would have a lower parking demand than a residential condominium would. The net effect would probably balance out.
You know, I apologize for not remembering, but what is the residential parking ratio that we're using in this project?
For the residents?
Yes.
I believe it's one-point-seven, it's been a while since we, one-point-seven per space? Which some folks would say is high, other folks would say is, could be tight. And that really becomes a matter of marketing for the developer to be able to sell a space. You want to be able to say that there's parking, whether they use it or not.
Yeah, I was thinking in the context of the hotel discussion you and I are having, that if, let's say, that each residential unit gets turned into two hotel rooms, then they would effectively, if the hotel was fully occupied all the time by people who were using cars, there'd be one, at least one car per hotel room, which would effectively be two cars, which would be larger than the one-point-seven. So that may just be something that as this goes forward, we sort of think about that because I'd hate to see, much as it'd be nice to have a boutique hotel, I'd hate to see the parking resources get constrained, since that's one of our reasons for doing Can you, well, actually, this first one, I don't need to have you put the chart back up. The property tax analyses, where we were looking at what the various public agencies, the city and whatnot, might be getting out of the project. When we're comparing it to not doing this project, are we looking at just the incremental value of property taxes, in other words, on the increase in the assessed value? Or, because these properties obviously have value, if we were to turn around and liquidate them tomorrow, something would get built on them.
We looked at the net increase in property tax.
Okay, so--
From where we are today, so they're not generating a lot because they're underutilized.
Got it, but it is, so we are looking at the increment, or at least some form of the increment. Do you have that chart that you, where you were showing, I believe it shows the summary of the economics from the city's point of view of what we're getting? It was the one right before the community benefits.
Alwyn?
Yes. I realized after I butted into Mr. Grokot's conversation with you that I think I was, I was thinking of something slightly different from what he was getting at. But I just want to go through the logic and make sure I understand that the parking structure, when we say valued at six to eight million dollars, that's for basically the value or cost to build a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-unit parking structure.
Correct.
Okay? And the point I was making earlier is that in a sense, that particular analysis overstates the value because we already have one hundred and eighty-seven units. They're not in a parking structure, so I'm ignoring quality differentials and all that stuff. But essentially, that takes out probably four to five or six million dollars' worth of value out of this. But you're, you know, the rest of your numbers are still significantly positive, so it still looks like an attractive thing to do. And can you refresh my memory, what the, in terms of all the properties that are being involved here, what we would estimate their market value would be if we were to liquidate them? We just call up a broker and say, put them on the market, sell them?
The four adjacent properties?
Yes. No, it's not the existing Wheeler parking lot, because that's different. I'm talking about all of the ones that we've bought and been assembling.
We've estimated selling the Foodville and Furniture properties together for about three-point-six to four million dollars.
Okay.
They're both vacant, one of them at least was occupied when we purchased it. The two housing assets combined, we purchased for one-point-seven million dollars. The residential building was a market-rate building when we purchased it, and now it's been operated as a below-market-rate building, and it was purchased with housing funds, so we would likely sell it as a affordable building. So I don't think the values we would get for those properties would be much greater. The commercial building, we probably would get more than what we paid for it. So let's see, it's probably still close to one-point-seven.
One-point-seven, right, right. Okay, so that effectively says, if I'm adding this up correctly, that, again, absent the parking, the parking lot, then the value of the properties is between like five-point-three and five-point-seven, between five and six million dollars.
Not to us.
Because we don't, because we don't own all of them.
Right, the successor properties, those funds get distributed to the other taxing entities, we get a small fraction of it.
Right.
If we're lucky. And the housing assets goes into the housing fund to support affordable housing.
Right. I was, that's a perfectly valid point, and thank you for mentioning it. I was just thinking in terms of integrated economics point of view. And that actually is, last question for now. What happens if we go ahead and approve these arrangements tonight, someplace down the road, Silverstone determines that, since this is a, this is not an overwhelmingly attractive economically, economic project, so that's why we have to put the properties in at zero value, that there's even less value there than had been thought? Do they, if I understand the agreements correctly, they have the ability simply to walk away from it, right, at various points in time? And the properties revert back to, not necessarily us, because we don't own all of them, but they do come back, right?
They are committing to moving forward. I think I would want counsel to weigh in on exactly when they could step out of the project without any significant loss. Once they've put hard money down, I think they're going to want to follow through. Obviously, when the rubber hits the road is when they raise funds and borrow funds and start committing those into the project. Up until that point, yes, there's probably still some things to work out to see how feasible the project will be. The numbers that I've presented to you are very conservative. They're conservative on the market sales side, they're conservative on the construction cost side, and we validated those with our consultant. We also think we've been fairly generous in terms of interest rates on the loan and equity, so the developer could probably do better negotiating than what we've assumed. So we think we're in good shape.
Okay.
But we won't, you won't know until you get closer to the day, whether construction costs have taken off and the market has plummeted.
The back of that question, what I was thinking of is, I like to look at these arrangements in part from a perspective of where the sort of balance of power shifts, and I'm not necessarily saying here, but there are situations where particularly if the project is relatively marginal, let's say, that once a certain set of agreements are signed, the balance of power shifts to the other side of the table. And then we and the other agencies basically that have an ownership interest in this could essentially be under the gun to have to cough up more, okay, in some way, shape, or form. I'm not exactly sure what that would be, since we're giving them the properties essentially at zero value. And I'm wrestling with that, trying to understand what that risk is, if any.
So by the time we convey the properties, the developer will have very specific site plans about what they're going to build, they will have lined up their equity and debt financing, so we'll know that there's adequate financing. And you have to assume that those equity and debt participants are doing their homework as well about whether the project is feasible. At that point, all the parties should feel very confident before the close of escrow. So that would be the point. Once we convey the properties, that's when we go over the hurdle of seeing it get built or not. But up to that point, we, if the developer can't come to the table with site plans that the city gets to approve, if it can't show that it has the money in the bank, we wouldn't convey the properties. We wouldn't take that risk at that point.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, or a few questions. Could you put the dates up there again, the time sequence? Yeah, that's great. The first question doesn't really relate to that, but the next one will. What's the length of the development agreement? It probably was in here, and I missed it. Forever?
I, I don't have a ready answer for that question. These are optimistic dates.
No, I'm not talking about these dates. What's the length of the development agreement? Somebody look that up for me? Okay, okay, we'll move on to question number two. So I'm looking at the dates, so it says design review and entitlements, fall-winter two thousand thirteen. Okay? So that's, what are we talking about the last day, ballpark, when we say fall-winter thirteen? Isn't, what are we talking there? Do we, are we going into fourteen, or are we?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so the winter of fourteen, we're talking about March of fourteen, number two?
Looking at from November two thousand thirteen to March of two thousand fourteen, sure.
Well, no, 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 I apologize.
Counsel?
I'm sorry, I'm confused, but I'm usually confused. Give me the, give me the dates, that's when, those are just starting dates? Is this starting dates?
So this would be assuming the developer would come back, and if this gets approved, and it gets passed the Oversight Board and passed the Department of Finance, we're assuming maybe six months from now, the developer would come back with plans.
Okay.
For the Planning Commission to review, for Council to review.
Okay, so that's October?
That would be November, December, January, February.
Okay.
In that timeframe.
So let's say it would have approved by the Planning Commission, and we would get it in January, February also, or the city council?
Yes.
Okay, so February of fourteen?
Yes.
That's finishing number two?
Yes.
So we don't start the parking construction until the fall? Not the spring?
I believe there'd probably be more detailed drawings that need to get done, and the developer could speak to the timeline a lot better than I could.
I'm just trying to see if there's a gap here, okay? I'm just trying to understand if there's a gap where people are just going, okay, we're just going to rest now. That's all I'm trying to see. We don't anticipate a rest?
No, no.
Okay.
I was working off a development schedule that the developer had prepared a while ago and adding new dates to it.
I'm not trying to confuse you, but I'm trying to understand that there's no, there's not going to be a rest between, or six months till September of two thousand fourteen?
No, I believe that's for them to do detailed plans and drawings, is that correct?
Okay, again, I'm just looking at what's up there, and there's a gap, so I just want to understand what the, what the gap is. It doesn't, doesn't say that line, doesn't say doing plans for six months.
No.
Because that's the interim, okay?
Yes.
But anyway, have we found the date of the development agreement, or how long it goes?
It'd be twenty-eight months from the date of approval by the Department of Finance.
Okay, so it does have a timeframe?
Yes.
So something has to be happening in those twenty-eight months?
Right.
Great, thank you very much, sorry, thanks. You just mentioned there were the driveways to the parking, sorry, driveways to the parking, and again, this isn't approved plans, but did you indicate there were two, going to be two separate driveways, one to the regular parking structure and one to the private parking structure?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be marked over, public parking, private parking?
Correct.
Again, possibly, we haven't seen the drawings or anything, just, do we know how big the gathering space is relative to Laurel Street Park? I'm trying to, in my mind, visualize how big that is. I'm sorry, Al, make you bounce up. If we know, if there, is there a visual?
Laurel Park is about seven thousand square feet, this would be about sixty-five to seven thousand.
So it's about the same, okay, I'm just trying to visualize in my mind. It's easier for me to do it that way than try to figure out how big it is. Thank you. And Mr. Suwicky? No more from, I promise I won't catch you up again. You mentioned about the seventy-two million dollars. Could you go back to, that's the seventy-two, less the sixty-two, less the nine? So as I understand it, if the units sell for more than seventy-two million dollars, the city could participate?
Correct.
But you seem to indicate that if the costs go up, that might impact?
Yes, so it's seventy-two million dollars, all things being equal. We have a provision in the DDA to track the change in construction costs from, I believe it's either the date of the agreement. So if, so if by the time that the units are being sold is three years from now, we will look at whether construction costs, how they have moved in three years, and we will adjust the seventy-two million dollars by that factor, by that index. So yes, it could be seventy-three or seventy-four by the time we get there.
Again, I apologize.
We're using market rates today for the sale of condominiums, not trying to project what they will sell for in three or four years.
I understand, and again, I'm trying to identify what work we have, in other words, as I was, I thought it was explained to me this afternoon, and I guess, or this morning, and I guess perhaps I misconstrued it, I thought it was just based on the price. So if they sell for seventy-four, we get a portion of that regardless of whether it costs them one-hundred-and-twenty to build it. And you're saying now, no, we're going to be looking at their costs?
We're using an objective index, not looking at their costs on this project, but looking at an objective index of what construction costs have done. at an objective index of what construction costs have done since, since the point in time today when we're fixing the $72 million.
Okay, so we're going to say, right now it's 62.7, we're going to apply just a percentage number, some sort of percentage number to that number?
Yes.
And we're going to?
To the 72 million, and that will be the new threshold.
No, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm thoroughly confused. Because this afternoon, when I asked the question, it seemed like a very simple one that I had done before, it's all based on the sales price. It sounds like we're going to have to look into their costs now, is what you're getting at. Or not, okay?
Sales, sales price plus an index, the index being the change in construction costs.
Okay, all right, I got it. So in other words, finally, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow. So 72 million, let's say that your cost index that you use goes up 10%.
Right.
That would be like 80 million.
Right.
If they sell the units for less than 80 million, we're out.
Correct.
If they sell for more than 80 million, and again, just wide open examples, we're in.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to look at their costs, we're just going to apply an index to the sales price?
Correct.
With the cost. Okay, thank you, I apologize, I misunderstood that. Thank you. That's all I had right now. Ms. Clapper?
Yes. Looking at the financial pro forma, I was curious about, under the project costs, under tenant relocation, we've included some costs for relocating from the retail building, $100,000. And a higher amount for the relocating from the Walnut Building. So we've, for the pro forma purposes, we've raised those costs a little bit more.
We were conservative in case there was a desire to add anything. One of the things that we would do for the commercial tenants is we would assist them to the extent possible in finding brokers, finding other space in San Carlos if they could, but we would not, we were not recommending handing, you know, giving them cash benefits.
Okay, so this was just, like you said, to be on the conservative side, okay. Then down under the construction costs, under remediation, is that the remediation for the dry cleaner?
That's correct.
Okay. So I was, I was a little confused there, because in the pro forma, there's $100,000, and in the staff report, there was a reference to up to $300,000. So there, you're being a little bit aggressive on the, on the costs, and I was wondering why that number was lowered from the staff report.
The environmental, the $300,000 number was a, an outside guesstimate from an environmental consultant when we were first getting into the DDA negotiations. We've since learned that the extent of the, of the contamination is probably not as great, but you don't really know until you start digging up and seeing what's really there. So he's done test samples that has given us a greater degree of confidence. But we were, you know, we want to have that ability to go to the successor agency and use up to $300,000 if it's necessary. We also don't know yet exactly what the cost will be for remediation. We're assuming remediation means that the soils that are contaminated need to go to a different place, and that costs more money than where you would send clean soil. And we don't know yet how, exactly how much that is.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, that's, that's a ballpark, it could be less. Could be much less.
Okay. And then in looking at the, the two different charts that you've shown, there's a, there was a city fiscal impact, and then the one that showed the financial returns to the different agencies. And both of them are using a discount rate of 6%. And I was just wondering why that percentage had been selected? What was the reasoning in using that in doing those net present values?
Yeah, well, I probably would want the economic consultant to inform us more on that, but this, you can use a range of discount rates, and a discount rate does a couple of things. One is it, it discounts for, for risk in the time value of money. How much is a dollar worth 20 years from now? So you want to look at risk factors. You also want to look at what your, otherwise your target rate of return would be on, if the city were to invest money, how much would it get on its, on its, on its investment? These days, probably, you know, we're lucky to get 2% on money. So your, a discount rate is really adding up your, your safe rate of return with, with a risk adjustment. And 6% is, is generally a market rate right now that investors use to discount long-term cash flows. Again, it depends on the riskiness of the, of the project, or whatever you're assessing.
So you've seen it used for other projects?
Yes.
Now, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clapper? Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, I had a couple other questions, focusing in on these, again, the hip housing units. The, you mentioned that as, as a somewhat of a separate project, and there still has to be some other agreements and so forth, and I'm just curious about what we, what are the difficulties facing that going forward? And what would you say is the probability?
Hip Housing is a willing partner. We've had discussions with them. The biggest obstacle would be acquiring the Vision Care property. And that's what we would use our existing housing funds for, and then when the in-lufy, when the in-luf fees get paid, we would use those for actual construction. That would sort of be the progression of events. If we could not get the Vision Care property at a reasonable value, I don't know if we would proceed with the project there. We may find another place to do a senior affordable project.
So if, so Hip would be in, but doing something just on their site where they have six units, wouldn't, mostly you could do there is what? Three floors of six units, each floor maybe?
Definitely makes it a less, less attractive project, yes.
Makes it less attractive. Okay. All right.
We would also lose the benefit of having a straight drive-through lane right now. If you, if you enter Wheeler from Cherry, you have to jog left or right. It's not great for trucks, it's not great for fire trucks if they need to get in there as well.
So probably don't want to say on the probability question, but you're saying Vision, the Vision Care property is really the big thing, could we get it, and so forth? And then on, in the staff report on page six, it talks about committing 600,000 of remaining bond proceeds to the Wheeler Plaza project. I assume that means selling bonds and then having to pay bondholders for interest and so forth. Can you explain a little bit how that works, and where did that show up in, I guess, these figures here?
The successor agency has $2.7 million of remaining bond proceeds from a bond refunding and an additional bond that was done in 2007.
Proceeds, what do you mean? Money's, cash sitting in the bank?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Since 2007, we've.
So there's no selling of bonds? It's, this has already been done, and money's there? So you're talking about taking 600,000 out of those proceeds and using that?
Under the Dissolution Act, if we reach this finding of completion, we are afforded the right to use those funds for what would have been redevelopment projects, such as Wheeler Plaza, which was one of the, one of the reasons why we bonded so that we could do the project.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins?
No more questions.
Strohber?
Just one more question, hopefully. Mr. Swicki, can you remind me what the, I believe the term is, the traffic mitigation fees are associated with this project are? And you don't have to be super precise, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't know if we've separated those out. We've included all the fees together. We did calculate that as part of the estimate of city fees and permits. I don't know what they would be offhand. There's a schedule that Public Works provides, depending on residential units and commercial. We did go through the exercise of estimating that, I just, I don't have the number in front of me.
Okay, and maybe I can just ask, if you can get me that information offline, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Swicki, Mr. Seve, appreciate it. I have one speaker card, John McMarrel.
Good evening. My name's John McMarrel with Silverstone Communities. And I see that we're going on five years here, having worked on Wheeler Plaza. Yeah. But slowly but surely, we're moving forward. Tonight is an important step in that direction. I really just wanted to thank staff for their expertise and focus, and really their determination to keep this project on track. It's a very complex project to put together, and it's gotten even more so with the dissolution of the RDA. And if it weren't for staff staying on this and being determined, we wouldn't be here today. Yeah, I did want to address your concern about the city's position versus Silverstone. You know, at this point, we're invested about five years, and probably somewhere over $500,000. As we move forward, once the project is approved by the state, hopefully, then we're going to begin spending money rapidly on drawings that come back to you for approval or disapproval. And once those drawings are approved, say, from the entitlement standpoint, the design, then we spend money on the construction drawings. So by the time we're done with our drawings and our entitlements, we'll be invested about $2.5 million. And then the staff has done a good job of making sure that the city never loses its position relative to us. So nothing transfers, none of the properties, nothing, until we are done, the project is 100% approved, and we've met with the city manager to review everything, and for him to determine that there's substantial financing, that we have everything teed up, ready to go. Then the property transfers. And the additional safeguard beyond that is if, if something goes awry, or nothing, something doesn't happen, there are reversionary rights in the grantee that the city gets the property back. So at, at no point are we in the driver's seat. But we're working together with the city to make this project happen, so we're comfortable. So I'm really available to answer any questions you might have, and again, ask for your support tonight, and as it goes forward to the state.
Any questions for Mr. McMarrel? Okay, thank you, Mr. McMarrel.
Thank you.
Five years? Did I have hair then? Did I have hair then?
You have a hair in ten.
Oh, okay. Darn. So we've asked our questions, we, I would entertain a motion for the first item, and then we can discuss, I would guess. I guess we'd accept three separate motions, Mr. Rubens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So I entertain a motion for item one, which is approving the 657 Walnut Street relocation plan. I'm not sure if there's a reading here, or a resolution, or a, is there some page here we're supposed to be reading off of?
Public hearing? Mr. Mayor?
Uh huh.
Wasn't this a public?
Oh, this is a public hearing, I apologize, yes. And I, thank you. You're supposed to do that. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? I apologize. You delegated it, okay. Okay, hearing none, no one willing to speak on this item tonight. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Staying? Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Appreciate that. Anyway, now I would entertain a motion, is there a reading, or a resolution, or a, I'm looking to staff, and they're looking at their papers.
Isn't this Resolution 213 dash?
So Resolution number 29?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move, see if I got this right, move Resolution 2013-29. 29. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the 657 Walnut Street relocation plan.
Is that appropriate, Mr. Rubens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moving to second, so we're, discussion now.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Does anybody else have concern about the commercial tenants, and the fact that they get no, no real help here?
I can ask a question of staff?
Sure.
If we, if we approve the relocation plan, does that shut out any opportunity to talk about whether we want to give folks money later on or not? Or do we get another bite of this apple?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly doesn't prevent the council from considering the issue further down the road.
When would that, when would that happen sequentially?
Mr. Swicki, I would imagine as we actually get into the timing of when the, when the properties would be demolished, and when the tenants would have to vacate the property, we'll begin to work that out with the tenants. I'm sure there are provisions in their lease that require a certain amount of notification. Can't remember offhand what it was. And so we would begin working with them. We could bring it back to the council at that time to let you know, particularly if there are demands being made, we would bring those back to the council for consideration.
The reason I brought that up is because I want to make, to your point, I want to make sure we do get another chance at this, because I have the same, I'm sure the same thoughts that you probably have, some, some ideas.
What are your thoughts?
Well, the same thing. I think, I think despite the fact that, I'm sure for 10 years, they knew it was coming, and despite the fact that they signed a piece of paper 10 years ago, and now reality sets in. And I think to be good neighbors, I think there's a, there's a situation that we need to look at. I'm not saying just necessarily give whatever they want, but the point is, look at the situation and try to help them if we can, because they've been, been in business for all this time in the community. So I'm, I'm open to giving something, or to looking at giving something to them, okay?
If I, if I can just add to that, for the sake of the council, the thing that does concern me, and I think I've voiced this before, but especially for instance, the dry cleaners, it's where I go for my, you know, nice-looking clothes here. You know, they're, they don't, English is not their first language. They didn't necessarily, I don't think, had a clear understanding. Their son looked at what they signed later and realized what they had done. You know, and a dry cleaners is, it's a difficult business to relocate. But for any of these folks, whether it's the dry cleaners, whether it's Hole-in-Won, or the ladies that run, looking good, for them, their business is really their retirement nest egg. Selling your business when you're in business like that is a lot of your retirement nest egg. And when you don't have a location, you can't very well sell a business. So they, I know particularly in the, in the case of the cleaners, their, their retirement is just decimated.
Well, this council member's open to all the comments that you made.
Right.
And so I just want, as was assured by the city manager, this will not be, by voting on this, we're not going to wipe them out, or zero it out, or whatever. Is that correct?
That, that's right. And also, of the $300,000 in terms of the relocation costs, while you have a legal obligation to relocate the, the residential tenants in the property, to the extent that there's available resources, there's nothing to prevent some of that $300,000 in being used towards relocation or other expenses related to the commercial tenants as well. The council will have to be careful in, when they consider costs associated with dislocating the, the commercial tenants, that you don't cross a line in terms of a gift of public funds. And we'll, we'll be able to work with the council and analyze that. But, you know, in terms of, you know, what council member Grokot talked about, in terms of the value of somebody's business, it's also relative very much so to the lease you sign. And the leases they signed were month-to-month leases. So, you know, that, that's a big, big difference in terms not only of cost structure for them, but in terms of what their expectations, and what the actual value of selling a business to somebody, when all they're getting is one month of that business on their lease, I wouldn't think that the value currently would be that much for them.
Anyway, the point is. We're going to get another bite of the apple. We're going to get an option to do that.
Through the chair, may I ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
I don't remember, did staff provide us a sense of what the financial value of the below-market rate rents were?
He said that. He said it in his presentation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's a, is there any information in this report? I know we've talked about it in the past.
You verbalized it earlier, I heard you say it.
I did verbalize it, yes. The tenants currently have leases, their month-to-month rate is anywhere from 83 cents a square foot to $1.56, and market rate rent is $2 to $3 downtown. So we estimate on annual basis, that's about $50,000 collectively. And over eight to 10 years, that's a significant amount of money.
Thank you.
And in terms of, you know, percentage of market, that's anywhere from 40% to 78%.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, something that was in the staff report, that if this disposition and development agreement is approved, it is noted here that city staff is going to provide the tenants, we already know this, with at least six months' notice of termination, and work with local brokers to identify suitable space in or near San Carlos. Carlos that could accommodate them. So I don't think we'd be, you know, we're just not going to throw them out in the street.
No.
So really, the question is, how much assistance are we going to give them, financial and otherwise? That's all.
Okay. Other discussion items? If not, I'll have a roll call then.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item number two is approving and authorizing execution of a disposition and development agreement for the Wheeler Plaza project. Could I have a motion on that?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-
Thirty.
Excuse me?
Number thirty.
Number thirty, of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving and authorizing execution of a disposition and development agreement for the Wheeler Plaza project.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm moved in second. So we have discussion on this now. Mr. Grocott?
The reason I asked what I did about the hip housing and that whole element to it is, you know, I'm not a big fan necessarily of interfering with the market and creating below-market rate housing. But, on the other hand, I see, you know, I look at this project and the Transit Village in a similar fashion. I think if, you know, government's the one that created this whole mandate about 15% or started out at 10%, then moved up to 15. And I think if anybody should be involved in participating and making sure they're creating this kind of affordable rate housing, anytime the government's involved in developing a project with a developer, they ought to participate in this kind of thing. I know they, you know, we asked the folks at Pacific Acienda to participate, and they gladly did. We asked the folks at 1001 El Camino to participate, and they gladly, mostly gladly did. And then here are these two projects coming our way, potentially 400 units between the two of them, including the Transit Village in this commentary. But I see somewhat of a reluctance to provide below-market rate housing within the project itself. I understand there's this appendage project that may or may not happen, but, you know, the guy who owns Vision Care property may not want to sell. And if that doesn't happen, the answer I got was the project won't happen either, more than likely, because the idea of tearing down six perfectly good units to try and build back 18, perhaps, if you could get, you know, a three-story building and some parking underneath or whatever, I don't even know if it could be done. But if you can't do that, if you can, it looks pretty good. You're taking out four units, you're taking out six units, so you erase 10, but you build 30, you're net ahead 20. If you look at, if you were to enforce the 15%, you'd get 16 units right off the bat. So it's a, you know, how did my mom used to put it about the, you know, bird in the hand is worth two in a bush, kind of thing. It seems like the bird in the hand is enforce the below-market rate housing on the actual development of Wheeler Plaza itself and get the 16. And if you can get this other later on, do that too, but get it out of this project.
You can't get both, because there wouldn't be-
Well, I suppose, yeah, because you-
There wouldn't be money coming to do the other, so. Go ahead, Mr. Olbert.
Yeah, I know, I think that's a very valid analysis. I'd be interested in having staff opine or weigh in on something, because I seem to remember in conversations I had with Mr. Suwicky and Mr. Malpe, that one of the advantages from the city's point of view of getting the money rather than the units is that we can leverage it with other funding sources for below-market rate housing, which are not available, if I remember correctly, not available to the developer of the project. So effectively, you can get more units out of it. Now, you have to have a place to be able to build them.
Well, that's just it, is, you know, when you look at San Carlos, which is just about built out, why are these two parcels being talked about for housing the way that they are, being the Transit Village and Wheeler Plaza? Because they're the only major acreages that are still left that are undeveloped where you can put this kind of thing, unless you start tearing. And we will do this in the future. I mean, I foresee a day where you start tearing down older housing units and building new ones. That's going to be the next phase of development along the peninsula. Right now, it's infill, and so this is what we're dealing with.
And actually, that's the other part of it. I was going to say that I'd be interested in having staff comment on as to whether or not it is possible to, it doesn't make any sense necessarily to leverage the money if you're not going to have any place to spend it. I get that. Question, so it's really twofold. One is, do you get to leverage the money, and are there places where you could spend it other than perhaps here, if it turns out you can't get the envisioned facility?
Well, a couple of points to make. You know, one, there's a difference between, under the law, between the rental housing that's being proposed in the Transit Village project, where the legal constraints, as they exist today, is that a city cannot require that type of housing developer to build the affordable units, that they have a legal right to choose to pay the fee. Now, with for-sale housing, you can require the units be built, except this city, the city council, the last time, and I don't know if it was the last time, but in our city below-market rate ordinance, we have elected to provide the option to the developer to either build the units or pay the in-lu fee. And we don't know necessarily for sure that the developer isn't planning to build some or all of the units. Earlier on, we believed that it was likely that they would look to pay the fee. So it doesn't mean that the units won't be built. But basically, you don't, as a council, have a mechanism currently in place to do anything other than let the developer make the decision. That's just the position that we're in, that the council has, in the past, has chosen to be in.
I would also say that, as you mentioned, Mr. Suwicky, I think the unit that we're encompassing on 657 Walnut was an at-market or a market-rate apartment complex when the city purchased it. And that is an option. You could go out using housing funds and buy a market-rate housing or apartment building and convert it to, that's what we did before, before my time, but it was done. I'm just giving another option where you don't have to build it, you can go buy it.
Yeah, I think basically what you're risking is not a lot. In other words, today, if we had, if we built the number of units, it's a certain number of units in the development. If we took that money, we could go out into the marketplace and buy an apartment building and just convert the units to lower moderate units. What we're hoping is that we're going to be able to take that money, leverage it with hip and other sources, to generate even more units than we would be able to do either through the Wheeler Plaza project or by going out and trying to buy or create or build them on our own. If that doesn't happen, we're really left in the position, well, we're going to get about as many units as we would have got anyway. So we're just hoping that we can get more by doing it this way.
Okay. Other comments?
The other thing that I'm concerned about with this whole project, and the reason I, that's the reason I asked what I did about the parking lot, is that you can look at this one way, yeah, we're getting 50 more spaces, and we're getting a parking garage. But you can't forget the fact that you're losing Wheeler Plaza as an open-air parking facility. And I'll just give you, you know, one example of the difference is if you look at what's being shown to us, you've got stalls at 90 degrees with the minimum trafficway that's needed, or that's required. And we all know, if you try to pull into one of those spaces, it's tight, sometimes people can't make it with one turn, they end up, you know, maneuvering around. People generally don't like parking garages as much. It's hard to replace a open-air parking lot like that. If we were to go buy one, and that was my point, you know, it's going to cost, because those are premium, you're taking 187 spaces versus the gain of, what is it, 237? But the 237 spaces, at least in my estimation, don't have the value of the 187 that are open-air at 45-degree angles with trees and, you know, so forth that you have. And that provides a certain character to our downtown. And that's one of the things that makes me really uncomfortable about this project. So that's why, and so the reason I asked about voting for the DDA, are you voting for the project? And I like the way Mr. Suwicky put it, is you're approving the expectation of what you see here. And I don't like what I see here. So while I voted for the dislocation agreement, because that's a different item, these next two items, I don't think I'm going to be able to vote for. And those are my concerns, the housing, affordable housing, and then the parking.
You know, your points, certainly your opinion, and I respect that. I think, in my mind, even if you were just getting 187 units, forget about the 237. Make them bigger, make them wider. The trade-off to me is the benefits that you're going to get with all the other things you're getting. You're getting the housing, you're getting people downtown, you're getting the commercial, you're getting all of that. To me, that outweighs the open-air. And it's not that pretty. I mean, I-
Well, it's not that pretty.
You're describing it as with trees and everything, and I'm going, it ain't that pretty.
But the truth is, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you're right, it's not that pretty now, but when it was first put in, it was pretty nice.
I'm sure it was.
And when trees have gone down, we've done nothing to replace them, we haven't restriped, you know, there's a lot that's been-
I've never really put parking lots in, but again, everybody got an opinion. And like I said, I appreciate your comments. Any other comments?
Well, just one comment I want to make is that San Mateo has parking structures, they have a fine downtown. Robot City has parking structures now, garages there in downtown is coming back very strongly. Palo Alto's got lots of parking garages, and everybody wants to go to Palo Alto. I mean, we can do this and do it right. I don't think we'll have a problem with people not wanting to come downtown. You know, this has been done, it's being done. Other cities are doing well, and I'm not worried about it. That's all I want to say.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor and discussion. Any further discussion? If not, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. And the third item is approving and authorizing execution of a cooperation agreement with the San Carlos Successor Agency to the Wheeler, for the Wheeler Plaza project.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 2013-dash-
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, Resolution of the City Council in the City of San Carlos approving and authorizing execution of cooperation agreement with the San Carlos Successor Agency for the Wheeler Plaza project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, even though I will probably vote against this, but one item I wanted to see if the council had any interest in is on page 32 regarding the payment, the thing you were asking about, payment to the city of portion of developer's share of profit.
Mm-hmm.
If that profit is on housing, might the council want to direct, I guess it doesn't have to be in this agreement, but it would be something that we would want to consider, we want to then in turn use that money for housing.
I don't know. Are we restricted on that, in case we do get money from that, Mr. Malpe? We restricted, or we can choose to do what we want with that money?
It has to go to the housing fund.
Or does it have to go to the housing fund? Or proportionally have to go to the housing fund, perhaps?
I think I would refer that to one of our attorneys in the room to answer. I'm not aware of any restrictions, but I haven't heard an answer to that question specifically before.
So maybe that's something the council could discuss at a later time.
Right.
It's really not necessarily part of the agreement.
No, no, right, you're right. A good point to bring up. So we can talk about it at a later date.
Can I just?
We can talk about it at a later date.
All right.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, well then, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, now we move to 9A-I, I guess. Is that correct, Mr. Rubens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
That's the one.
Is there-
That's the one they're doing right now.
Is there any kind of report on this, or we're just, it's just an item that we've, it's a sort of a specific resolution?
It looks like the reciprocal agreement that you just approved from the successor agency side.
That's correct. And it was agendized as a separate item.
Okay.
Because this is the item that will then go to the Oversight Board and Department of Finance to approve. This is just the successor agency approving the cooperation agreement with the city.
Okay, so now we're a successor agency?
Yes.
Okay, sitting is that. Okay. Could I have a motion by a member here of the successor agency to adopt that resolution?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-dash-
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, Resolution of the San Carlos Successor Agency approving and authorizing execution of a cooperation agreement with the City of San Carlos for the Wheeler Plaza project.
Okay, so this is a technicality. Okay. Any comments or questions? I'm sorry, second. I need a second, I apologize.
Second.
Sorry, Mr. Collins. Any other comments?
I could really confuse things by voting yes on this, but-
Yeah, you could.
John would like that.
See if Crystal could write it, keep track of all this. But why don't we have a roll call on this one, please?
Councilmember Clapper?
I don't think it's a council member.
Yes.
It's not.
Oh.
Agency member.
Agency member Clapper?
Yes.
Agency member Collins?
Yes.
Agency member Grocott?
No.
Agency member Olbert?
Yes.
And Chair Griselli.
Yes, thank you. We want to fool you there a little, Crystal, on that. So, all right. That's number nine. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on. Item 10 is new business. 10A is consideration of a resolution authorizing execution and delivery of finance agreement with the South Bayside System Authority relating to 2013 wastewater revenue bonds and approving related actions. Mr. Walter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And just to introduce the item, what we as a member agency of the South Bayside System Authority have an obligation to do is to approve financing agreements when the authority needs to go out and sell bonds in order to finance the improvements that they want to make. And so tonight, Dan Child, general manager for the authority, is here, along with Teresa Herrera, the engineering manager. And they'd like to kind of expand the presentation just a little bit. First of all, I'll give you an update on the SBSA Capital Improvement Program, and talk a little bit about that, and then present the item for the financing agreement for your attention. So I'd like to ask Mr. Child to come up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Child, nice to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Just left.
Okay, perfect. Since we're running a little late, I'll try and move through this as quickly as I can. Tonight, just like to give you a quick update on where we are, my part of this presentation at least, is where we are on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program out at SBSA. Talk about our funding needs. The force main replacement project and the pump station replacement is moving along well. I'd like to talk about that. And also, our 40-plus-year-old JPA has become quite outdated, and we are in the process of trying to update that. So just give you a real quick update on how those things are going. Our commission, of which Mr. Griselli is, Mayor Griselli is a member, has approved the Capital Improvement Program. It consists of 144 individual projects. At the current time, 31 of those are in our design phase, 37 of them are in construction, and 46 are complete. The total budget for this program is $420 million right now. Of that, approximately $140 million is in one of those three phases, so it's moving along fairly well. Now, this program originally started out as a 10-year CIP. It's really a rolling 10-year CIP, so we're looking at 12, 13 years as we're going at this point. We started out at about $340 million, and as we've gone out these extra three years, it has grown. And we're actually going to talk a little bit about a new program in a few minutes that is adding a considerable cost even to what we're seeing here today. Just to give you an idea, the projects, the number that's complete is growing. Last year, we had 39. This year, we've got 46 that are complete. We still have 37 that are under construction, so we've been able to maintain a pretty steady state of construction and keeping things moving along. Our design, we actually have 23, one more in design, and eight that are in the planning phase right now. So we continue to move the whole program along fairly well. The commission also asked us to take a look at our projects and determine how critical they were. Was there a way to try and save some money, delay some of our projects, or even delete projects? We're able to get that- We're able to get that down to where we were actually able to push some of them out five more years, a few out even past 18, 19, fiscal year 18, 19, and we came up with some that we were actually able to delete. Of those, about $382 million ended up being projects that we have to do and have to do basically as fast as we can. We could delay $31 million for five years, about $5 million can wait until after that '19, and we were able to delete about $3 million worth of projects. Now, the part of the reason this is happening is we get into the projects, we're learning things. This is an existing facility, and it's just like kind of digging up something in your backyard. If you start digging, you find something, sometimes it's stuff that might be something that fixes something for you, and you didn't, you don't have a problem, you anticipate it, other times it creates new work. And that's kind of what this whole CIP is doing for us. It's every once in a while, we turn a corner and find something new. The new big thing that's adding to the project is what's called nutrient removal. Now, nutrient removal is removal of ammonia and nitrogen and possibly phosphorus. We don't know if phosphorus is going to come real quick, but the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is based out of Oakland, has announced that in approximately five years, treatment plants that discharge into the bay will all be required to remove nutrients. They have not determined what level, how much, it's totally a pie in the sky. This is coming, we'll tell you what it's going to be here in a few years, but start planning for it type of process. South Bayside System Authority is the furthest plant south in the bay today that does not already have these requirements. Every plant south of us, Palo Alto, Santa Clara, San Jose, they already have these requirements. So it's just a matter of expanding it up through the rest of the bay. We're today plugging in an estimate of $100 million to be able to accomplish that removal of those nutrients when that time comes, but it's very, very early in the process, so it's just a placeholder right now. And that is not included in the $420 million that I showed you earlier, so it's going to bump us up over a half billion dollars. As far as funding goes, let me get back here, our funding right now is, we start out with a bond for about $10 million in December of 2008. In July of '09, we went out for another $55 million. One thing we have done quite fervently is try to find less costly ways of financing this program. The California Water Resource Control Board oversees what's called the State Revolving Fund, which is, was mandated by the Clean Water Program back in 1972 by the federal government to allocate low-interest loans and grants for wastewater treatment programs. And as we proceeded through this, we've asked about grants, and we've been told due to our demographic income levels, we're not generally eligible for grants. We've been able to get two loans, one about $11 million and another one just over $35 million at reduced interest rates. One of the 11 million is at 2.2%, and the 35 million is at 1.8%. So very good terms on those. We continue to look for opportunities to get grant funds, to get low-interest loans. We were just awarded a grant by PG&E on an energy project we're doing of $2.4 million. So there are funds out there that we're able to try and keep our costs down, but in $400 million, it's a challenge to try and put these monies together. So our next need is to go out for an $80 million bond, and that's what we're going to be talking about as we go through tonight. We expect to sell this bond in mid-June, early-July timeframe. It's going to be used primarily for the force main and pump station work that we're moving into. So it's something that is an immediate need, and I don't remember how many of you were here when we first talked about the Capital Improvement Program, but the force main is a pipeline, actually, let me move on to this, come back to that one. The force main is a pipeline that starts down on Marsh Road at the Menlo Park Pump Station, travels all the way up into Redwood City, out onto Bear Island, off, back off Bear Island, across the taxiway in the San Carlos Airport to a pump station, then on over to Redwood Shores, and ultimately out to the treatment plant. This next project that is coming up, to zoom in on it, the first one, is starting at the Redwood City Pump Station and moving on over all the way to the San Carlos Pump Station. Our force main is made out of 12-foot sections of reinforced concrete pipe with a bell-and-spigot single O-ring connection, and it's embedded in bay mud, which bay mud is basically pudding. It moves all over the place. This section between here and here, this is about two and a half miles of our nine-mile pipeline, is responsible for 75% of the leaks we have. So this has been our top priority since we've started, is to get this section of pipe replaced. We are actually out to bid right now, let's see where my mouse went, on the very first section from Redwood City Pump Station on to Bear Island. The next section that will come, will actually be the section off of Bear Island into the City of San Carlos property, going down, what's it called, Skyway Parkway, down Monte Vista to the location of the pump station. And then ultimately, we'll fill in the section on Bear Island as the projects continue. So one way we're trying, as we build this, there's, we're going through some really dense populated areas and a lot of businesses, so one of the things we're trying to do is eliminate as much open cut, just big, deep trenches as we can. So we're using microtunneling in many places. Microtunneling basically is you dig a pit down about 35 to 40 feet, you put a boring machine in that starts digging and pulling pipe in behind it, ultimately reaches a retrieval pit where you pull the machine out and start all over again. You can go about 1,000 to 1,500 feet in a section, so basically, you're able to go every 1,000, 1,200, depends on exactly where, and not have the big open-cut trenches and the problems you have with closing roads and that type of stuff. There's still some impact, but we're trying to lessen that impact, and this is the type of technology we'll be using as we go through Skyway, through San Carlos area, and in many other places as well. Pump stations are a whole nother issue. As you may remember, all of the pump stations, we have four pump stations right now plus a booster station. One of the pump stations and the booster station are located on Monte Vista, just outside the airport fence. One of our goals is to try and get a better system that alleviates some of the reliability issues with pump stations. Every time you have a pump station, it's more likely you're going to have problems. So one of the things we've been able to do in our preliminary design is reduce our pump stations from those four plus the booster station down to three pump stations, which ultimately lessens our risk and will save us quite a bit of money as far as the lifetime, life cycle costs of these pump stations and the operation and maintenance of them. One of the side effects of that is when we get ready to do it, and that's not one of the focuses today, but I'm just kind of giving you a heads-up, is that in the future, I'll be back talking about easements that we're going to need for the pump stations, and one of the side effects that we will need a slightly bigger, I say slightly bigger, it's almost double the size of the size we have now for the pump station in San Carlos. Luckily, there is some vacant space there that's, I shouldn't say vacant, it's lightly-used space that we think is usable. This is just a preliminary view of that. This section here is the existing pump station. The new section will add to that with this. We'll have flows coming in from the north and from the west into this pump station, and ultimately back out, the green is the force main that will go out to the treatment plant. So it, the one nice thing about that is the majority of this section, actually, almost all of this section is actually underground, so it's just a matter, you won't see anything from the surface. All the surface will remain the same, but this part will be underground to where it won't be a sight for anyone to see. As I stated, the JPA is a 40-year-old document. We've got a version out to all of our member agency staff that they're looking through, trying to come up with any concerns that they have. We've asked for comments on her before May 23rd, and we're hoping to have that all put together back to each one of the member agencies for ratification before the end of the year to get it updated. The original JPA really was put together to build SBSA, and it doesn't really talk about how we operate today and how we interact, and we feel like there's a real need to do that. So just to re, one more time, real quick, is the capital program is proceeding, it's a little bit slower than we originally anticipated. We haven't spent as much money as you would think on a year-per-year basis. However, the big dollars where we're doing this force main is totally, the force main and the pump stations are worth about $220 million out of that 400 originals, and we're just really starting that. The $80 million for the bond, which we'll be talking about in a minute on the need of the finance agreement and how that works, the new regulations coming up, they're going to add $100 million to our costs in about another five years or so, the force mains coming along, getting that out, the first project's out to bid, as a matter of fact, we're supposed to receive bids this Thursday, and then the JPA work is going from there. Other than that, any questions that you might have on what I presented to you?
Questions for Mr. Child, Mr. Grocott?
Just a question regarding, let me put it to you this way. I went up to, I guess it was Sonoma, a while back, and it was a kind of a green technology sustainability conference, and they talked about how, I believe it was in Sonoma itself, they were taking their effluents and creating energy with it. Is anything like that going on out here, or is there anything forecast in your capital improvement project?
The one thing we do for energy is we do is cogeneration. Part of the treatment process is the breaking down of solids, and when you do that, you create methane gas, which is basically natural gas. We burn that in engines and create about, today, we're creating about 25 to 28% of our power. One of the CIP projects is a doubling of that capacity, so we're expecting to be able to treat at least 50% of our power needs from that. That project's actually, it's going out to bid fall time, this fall, so yes, we are doing some of that. We don't really have an opportunity to be able to get power from the actual effluent going out, because generally, you need some fall in your outfall to be able to do that. Unfortunately, we're below sea level, so we have to pump everything out to the bay anyway, so we don't have that luxury in our system.
What about these things that you, the 100 million that you talked about, that they don't want you putting that out into the bay? Is there any opportunity to do anything with, I guess you said nitrogen and some other...
Ammonia and nitrogen are the two big ones. Not really, unfortunately, they're, they're, well, I shouldn't say, they're, I've never seen it used in wastewater. Typically, we use a biological process to use it in wastewater. I guess, maybe we should, we could evaluate, that's not a bad idea to look and see if there's a way to harvest that ammonia, because ammonia and nitrogen are used as fertilizers, so.
Sure, that's what, yeah.
Maybe, my gut feeling is telling me it's probably more costly than what you could get out of the product, but it's worth looking at.
Worth looking into, yeah. And I think Saturn's mostly made out of one of those products. I might want to sell it to them.
Other questions? Okay, Mr. Child, thank, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had one, that was sort of along the lines of what Mr. Grocott was talking about. My question was, and then this nutrient removal, what happens to those nutrients? What do you do with them?
Basically, they're consumed by bacteria that use them as food, and then it creates more sludge, bio-solids that you have to treat. And then, this is a whole treatment system, or a whole lecture on treatment systems. From there, you're going to put those into anaerobic digesters, break it down, create more methane, which in theory should create more natural gas of the methane that we can burn to create electricity, but it's really a very, that's simplifying it drastically, it's a pretty costly process. It takes a lot of oxygen, approximately five times the oxygen that we use now for the bacteria to be able to do that compared to what we do today, so it's definitely not a net energy or net product gain. It's a very costly thing that we've tried to avoid for many, many years, because, and for obvious reasons.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Thank you, Mr. Child.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. Mr. Walter, what do we have next? Or do we have anything next?
Mr. Mayor, essentially, we need the council to approve the financing, this draft financing agreement for SBSA.
Okay.
And I had a couple of questions about this from earlier in the week, and one of the things is, Mr. Child has provided, is this financing agreement in its draft form, and as you get into the appendices, there appear to be blanks and numbers missing, but essentially, it's the, essentially, it's the blanket approval from the City of San Carlos as the agency, member agency for SBSA, to give them the authority to go out and sell bonds. And so then, all of the information, the repayment information and all that, is dependent upon the bonds that they sell and the rates at which they sell, and who they buy, who buys them, and all that. So this information gets filled in essentially after the bond sale is complete.
Okay, and the 80 million is the full, is 100% of, our proportion is about 15 point, a little over 15% of that?
That's correct.
Right, just to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about here. About $12 million is going to be our, we'll be on the hook for. Mr. Walter?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Walter, since I think I was one of those people you were alluding to asking the question. The one question I did have is, in the financing arrangement in Appendix A, and I think you and I talked about this, but I don't recall the answer, the allocable share is blank. And in the subsequent agenda item, the allocable share is defined as 15.14%. So is this a different allocable share, or is there some reason why it's blank, or...
You have to come up, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of council?
Identify yourselves, please.
Alex Handler's from Bartle Wells, and he's a consultant to both SBSA and the city on these issues.
Yes, good question. The allocable share for the bond sale is going to be based on which member agencies participate, which has historically been San Carlos, Redwood City, and West Bay Sanitary District, so...
I misspoke, I apologize.
Your 15.14%, I think of SBSA, when you take Belmont out of the equation, it's about 16 and 1/2%, so somewhere about 13 and 1/2 million total would be your share not to exceed.
If I may, to follow up, so I take it from your comment that traditionally or historically, Belmont has not participated in these?
Belmont participates in some of the financing, going for the State Revolving Fund loan, but when it comes to bond financing, they went their own path, they did their own thing with their rates to try to generate some more pay-as-you-go funding for this project as well, by adopting a big rate increase upfront.
And you anticipated my next question, which is, how do they actually fund their share? Because presume, I presume that if we do not accept the financing proposal, basically, we would owe you $16 million upfront. Okay.
They've done their own bond sale in the past.
I see.
And they've, I think, funded a chunk in cash as well from their, the large rate increase they adopted a few years back.
I see, okay, thank you.
Great, other questions?
I have a question, I'm just, maybe this is too far out there, but I'm just thinking a little bit about these bonds, and I know one of the things, when we get to this next part about increasing the rates, one of the things we always get letters about, and I really feel for these people, is folks around a fixed income. And what comes to mind is, for instance, right now on the radio, the state is running ads for the, you know, buy California bonds, and they're saying, if you buy in this window of opportunity, you won't even pay any, there are no finance charges. And I'm just wondering if, what the terms of these bonds are, is there a way to make them available through our billing advert, through advertising in our billing or something where our ratepayers would, could get an opportunity to buy some of these? I assume they're tax-free bonds, and I don't know what kind of, what kind of revenue they would put off for somebody, but that's a curiosity.
Well, Alex, could you, who are these, normally, let's assume we approve this, who are they marketed to?
It's a good question, and there's different groups of buyers for different types of bonds. There's a lot of institutional investors, funds that buy big chunks of bonds. There are also individuals who buy in smaller chunks, they're the retail market, as they call it. So typically, the underwriters, different underwriters have different strengths for who they market to. I'll point out what we're recommending for this bond sale for... I'll point out what we're recommending for this bond sale for SBSA, something called a competitive sale, where it's bid out to the different underwriters. They come together in teams, sometimes individually, to try to put the best bid together. They want bonds. There's definitely retail and institutional demand right now. So they make their profit getting these bonds and being able to turn around and sell them at a profit to the end buyers. You're bringing up a good point. The more retail, generally, the lower rates you get for bonds, because the retail investors are willing to take a few basis points less. There may be some institutional investors out there who are wheeling and dealing this stuff all the time. The underwriter, I'm sure, would love if the city had some process of identifying individuals who are interested in buying the bonds, and they could be given a list of, hey, include these folks on your distribution list. But, yeah, I don't know the practicality of doing that or how easy it is, but there have been other agencies we've periodically worked with on rare occasion where we've tried to put together a list like this for the underwriter. So it's something that could happen. The rates are not fantastic. I mean, the rates are low now, so it's not like they're earning lots of money. And they would have to buy in at the same initial public offering price that was being offered to other investors out there.
How does advertisement for the bonds coordinate, if at all, with our billing process? I guess my question is, put it a different way, is there any way we could advertise for the bonds at a retail basis in our billing? You know, just in the billing, it would includes, you know?
There is no billing, because it's going to be in your property tax bill.
Oh, property tax bill, okay.
These are going to go in a different place. It's not a monthly thing. We don't pay the water and sewer that way.
You could put something out there in other city documents, newsletters, I'm not sure what else you have.
You could identify, call Mr. Jones' broker, this is the broker for these bonds.
And even in advance, contact someone from the city. You can compile a list of names that could be passed on to the broker.
No, we don't have a list.
We don't know who the underwriters are.
No, the only way you could do it is you could put it in something in the city and say, if you're interested in buying some sewer bonds, call this company. Right? And they theoretically would entertain it, depending, I guess, theoretically, if they haven't sold them all already. California does it different, because, well, California does it different. Let's just put it that way.
That's right. It's a little different scenario, the way California is selling their bonds, hundreds of millions of dollars with multiple underwriters involved in a big negotiated sale process.
It's a whole different world.
A little different than what's going on here for your measly 80 million compared to what they're looking for.
Easy for you to sell.
Easy for you to say.
I just want to ask.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Alex, if you would.
I'm sorry, Alex, another question.
Don't go away.
We're learning how to do bonds now.
Just a point of clarification. I used to sell mutual funds, and companies had California tax-exempt bond funds that you could buy into. And so I assume these are revenue bonds, right, as opposed to general obligation?
That's correct.
That's right. Okay. So in the prospectus, people see that they're, line item by line item, they list all of the municipalities that have issued these bonds, and presumably, these would show up in a prospectus of whatever institution, mutual fund company or otherwise, that decided to partake and buy them and then offer them to the investing public.
That's right. I mean, if it's a bond fund, it could show up in the PIMCO bond fund, one of their holdings. Or very often, it just shows up, you could log on to some website, whether it's Schwab or Vanguard or whatever, and they could see all the bonds that are out there that they could purchase. You want to purchase 5,000, 50,000, or they go through their financial advisors, but yeah, they, this would be one of a number of national bond issues.
And these are still quite popular, because these are tax-exempt bonds. So if there's a rate of return of 2%, you have to look at it from the investor's point of view, that's probably a real rate of return of them, maybe three or more.
Okay, we're getting a little inside baseball here. Thanks, Alex, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've got to stick to the knitting here. So I'm looking for, first of all, is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. Need a motion on this? We can discuss it further if we need to.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 33, 33, of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing execution and delivery of financing agreement with the South Bayside System Authority relating to 2013 wastewater revenue bonds and approving related documents and official actions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Other, last questions for, on this item? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisell?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. 10B, consideration of setting a public hearing on May 28, 2013 pursuant to Proposition 218, to consider a three-year increase in residential and commercial wastewater rates and introduction of an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 18.08.250 dash sewer services, charges, and fees. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And before we get started, I'd like to introduce you to our new city engineer, Matt Lee, who's sitting in the back of the room here. And as we go through our process.
He can come up, he's in front, it's okay.
As we go through our process, all the CIP projects that we talk about that are related to the city's collection system, Matt will have his engineering staff and other consultants that'll be working on those. And so please welcome Matt when you have an opportunity to do so. Tonight also, as you just have met, Alex Handler's from Bartle Wells is the consultant that we hired to do our sewer rate study this year. And so he and I will be sharing the presentation for you, and then be available to answer questions at the end, as well as Dan Child, Teresa Herrera from SBSA. And in the back, Rebecca Menen Hall, if happens to be, everybody is stumped by a question, then I'm sure she'll be able to help us out as well. So I'll go ahead and get started, and then we'll get to that point. I'm sure there will be a number of questions. So tonight, we'll be talking to you about our sewer enterprise fund and the rates that are needed to keep it functioning, as well as the outside requirement from SBSA and what's needed there. The financial challenges that we face currently and in the years to come, the rate alternatives that we have proposed for your consideration, and rate structure modifications which are needed. And they essentially cause some small modifications to current rates as we look at, for lack of a better term, kind of truing up the way that people are paying their rates and how their sewer use is accounted for in our program. So again, our goal is that we will be looking to you to approve an approach where we will have a three-year rate increase strategy that we will go forward and we will notice our ratepayers about. So our utility overview, sewer utility overview, we serve about 28,000 people and businesses in San Carlos, 11,100 sewer accounts, roughly 90% residential. So that you can see, we predominantly have the single and, single-family and multifamily homes that we collect wastewater from. Our wastewater collection system, 105 miles of sewer pipeline, six pump stations, much of it you can't see, and yet, we need it to be functioning very well. The wastewater is conveyed to the SBSA plant for treatment and disposal, as Mr. Child talked about in the previous item. And we also take in wastewater from four county sewer maintenance districts conveyed through our system, and then on to SBSA. So some of the current sewer challenges that we're facing with, and these are some that determine the direction of our program that we don't have direct control over. Back in 1972, the Clean Water Act was enacted, and it regulates pollutants into the waters of the U.S., a pretty broad regulation. But it sets treatment standards for the wastewater industry. So SBSA governed by those treatment standards, and a lot of what they do out there is based on those standards, and that's the costs that are associated with it. And the requirements were expanded to include stormwater in 1999, when the first NPDES permits for stormwater were issued. And so we see trends that are moving towards potentially eventual treatment of stormwater before it's discharged into waters of the U.S. Not there yet, but we're starting to hear the rumblings and have those discussions with the regulators. For us in the city, the consent decree with the San Francisco Baykeeper, which essentially was signed a couple of years ago, it had a number of pretty serious conditions that were associated with it. The mandate particularly to reduce the sanitary sewer overflows that we were experiencing within our collection system. We were required to develop a capacity assurance plan, which, as the council may remember from last spring, you adopted rates to help pay for the capital improvement projects that are a part of that. That is to essentially increase the capacity of our pipelines to help minimize those overflows. We also had a requirement to develop a sewer condition assessment and replacement program, which eventually became our sewer master plan, which is another subject of our rate increase and the needs in the capital portion of that. We have a fats, oils, and grease program in order to help eliminate some of the things that typically cause problems with clogging and eventually lead to overflows at different points of the collection system. We have a very aggressive program of cleaning hotspots and laterals where we know we have problems, especially where there's root intrusion. The city has a lateral replacement program, and we do an extensive amount of reporting and monitoring, again, as part of our Baykeeper Consent Decree. And these are all costs and obligations that we have to, we have to go along with. Other challenges, the city's CIP production has not really kept pace with the need as it was outlined in our sewer master plan. Since 2007, 1.5 million in pipeline improvements, or only three projects have been implemented. And the master plan alone identified between 2 and 3 million per year in high priority projects, which, and we know that the kind of upper limit of that master plan was in the range of $60 million for pipeline replacements. These are repair and replacements of our collection system. Other utility costs in our own home budgets, it's kind of interesting to think about when we, we talk about the monthly sewer rates that our single-family residents will be paying as it relates to these rate strategies, in the neighborhood of $75 to $88 per month at the end of the third-year term. But when we look at it, and some of the other expenses that we might typically have in our homes, such as DirecTV or cellular phones, internet service, even transportation costs can easily exceed the monthly cost of our sewer rates. And it just gives you a little bit of a context, the value that the investment that our ratepayers will be making in that sewer collection system, and its relative cost to those other things in our lives, which we essentially have and have found that we need. And ultimately, this is a public health and safety issue. Without the improvements, the backups, overflows, treatment violations, all can occur, and that endangers public health in many different ways. So we face many challenges, and as we have gotten, gone forward now and studied the rates and some rate alternatives, I'd like to ask Alex Handler's to come up and continue from this point in the presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay. I'm going to kind of walk through the finance, financial stuff pretty quickly. It's more of an overview, and I'll try to keep it quick. Basically, your sewer enterprise is entirely self-sufficient. You don't get tax revenues, outside revenues. 95% of the revenues come from sewer service charges. So your rates underpin that and have to be adequate to fund your cost of service, and that's really the bottom line. Rates need to recover cost of service. A number of years back, there were no rate increases for about eight or nine years, but I know for the last seven years, you've been moving rates in the right direction, you've been providing some good financial stewardship. You never have perfect information, but you've been moving the rates in the right direction, which has been important and is preventing even larger rate increases going forward had you not done that. Your rates, by the way, you're in the middle of all the San Mateo County agencies, a little bit on the low side, actually, but you are facing some pretty big financial challenges. The next slide's just a chart of rates going back to 1996 or so, and you could see in blue what's happened with your rates versus, the red line just shows what if you had done five point, you know, equates to 5.2 annual cost escalation, which is not a lot different than regular inflation for water wastewater enterprise, which is heavily capital-intensive and labor-intensive. It's not like CPI. So your rates overall have been going up 5% a year for the last, you know, 15 to 20 years. The red bar shows where you stand compared to other San Mateo County agencies. So you're, the lower-middle range, the yellow lines there, the yellow arrows are pointing how you compare to the other SBSA member agencies, and you can see you're the lowest of the four right now for a typical residential home. Three of the agencies have flat rates. Belmont has partially flat rate, partially variable rate, so we made some assumptions there. But overall, you're the lowest. Unfortunately, you are facing some pretty big financial challenges. One of them is that your treatment plant was mostly grant-funded back when it was originally built. So you've been going all these years kind of on a free ride when it came to capital costs for wastewater treatment. However, now, the whole plant needs to be rebuilt. Dan already gave you a rundown on that $420 million is the total estimated cost. There'll be some cost inflation we factored in there. Your 15.14% share is about 66 million. We did put a placeholder estimate out in year, you know, six years down the line for the nutrient removal project, just so we could see, you know, what it looks like. The near-term rates aren't funding any of that, and I think what's going to happen is after these three years, you're going to continue to evaluate your long-term finances and kind of aim your rates in the right direction, and adjust courses necessary as reality unfolds. Jay talked about your consent decree, capacity assurance projects that legally need to get done within the next five years. You've got a lot of pipelines in the city that are, you know, 40, 50, 60 years old that are going to need replacement. Some of them probably could benefit from replacement now, I would guess. And on top of that, operating cost inflation, whether it's from SBSA or here in the city, staffing, insurance, electricity costs, et cetera, tend to go up every year for water wastewater agencies. Historically, it's been closer to, you know, 4% to 5%, not the 2% to 3% CPI that, you know, someone going to a supermarket can face. What we did was develop 10-year financial projections, put in all the costs, mostly based on your budget. We try to be a little conservative in our financial assumptions, and we looked at a whole bunch of alternatives and kind of boiled it down for your consideration to three. All the alternatives, obviously, they fund what has to be funded, which is operating costs, consent decree projects, and SBSA, CIP costs, operating and debt service. The big difference between the three alternatives is, how are you going to start addressing these high priority master plan projects? Are you going to defer them for five or six years and cross your fingers? Are you going to start partial funding towards those projects? Or are you going to try to do the whole thing and tackle that in the next few years? Next slide shows a projection of expenditures, and you can see that any time you adopt rates, you're not done. It's steps along a pathway, climbing an ever higher mountain. Unfortunately, what you're dealing now is, you're kind of having to go up to a plateau over a number of years. But just to point this out, this isn't the end of the line. If you were to do three years of rate increases, something lies beyond that. The more rate increases you do now, the lower rate increases you'll need in the future and vice versa. So there's not a single right or wrong answer to how you address this. The three alternatives we came up with, I mentioned the bare bones minimum. Just do what's mandated and what SBSA needs to do, cross your fingers, and don't fund any master plan projects over the next few years. In fact, draw down your fund reserves just to fund the basic needs. That would equate to three 12% increases. And we brought that up just to give you an idea of the floor of what we're looking at. We also came up with, hey, you know, there's always a balance of competing objectives to these rate increases. You want to do everything with a financial stewardship and the operational stewardship. On the other side, you don't want to nail your ratepayers with any more rate increases than is really necessary at any given time. So we came up with kind of a mid-range approach, three 15% rate increases phased in over three years. And then, on the upper end, if you really needed to get those master plan projects done on relatively short order over the next three to five years, what would you need to do to kind of jumpstart your rates? You'd need to bump them up a little more in the front end and keep them moving in the right direction. So this next slide shows what the impacts are. And as Jay mentioned, in addition to just doing across-the-board rate increases, these days, under Proposition 218, you've got to demonstrate that your rates are fair and equitable for all customer classes. So we went through that exercise and building in some rate structure modifications that we'll talk about in a second. It came up with, you know, what do the rates need to be for single-family homes, et cetera? And everyone's, compared to the prior rates, due to this rate restructuring and rebuilding the rates from scratch to make them fair for all classes, there are some slight differences in the rates for some classes. And that's why we see the current rate for residential charge, $637, and it's about 24 cents per year, with the adjustment that bumps it up by, you know, $6 and change per year to bring everyone in equity. So you can see, at the top, the three So, you can see, at the top, the three 12% rate increases bring the annual charge up to $908 per home. It's a little over $75 a month, about $250 per day per sewer service. Under the alternative B, the mid-range approach, the annual charge up to $982, a little bit higher, you know, a little over 81, almost $82 per month. And alternative C brings it still yet higher than that. Mind you, you're not the only one raising rates out there. I think just about every agency on the peninsula is facing some serious challenges. Maybe not all the same challenges as you are, but a lot of agencies are facing some real substantial needs to improve their collection systems. A lot of old pipelines out there. Baykeeper's been very active, and a lot of agencies are having to fund those projects in upcoming years. And a number of agencies have old treatment plants that were grant-funded that are going to need to be rebuilt. San Jose being one of them, San Jose Santa Clara Treatment Plant, Sunnyvale's got a lot of upgrades to do, San Mateo, San Bruno is moving full bore ahead with major pipeline replacements. But this slide here just shows how you compare to the other SBSA member agencies. On the left is how you currently compare, and on the right is how you would compare. You're the orange one under the three alternatives. We don't know yet what Belmont's going to do, but we have preliminary indication that Redwood City and also West Bay Sanitary District are moving ahead with a series of 9% rate increases. That's 9% on a rate that's already higher than yours. So, we anticipate you're going to be either the lowest or the second lowest next year when these rates are, whatever rates are adopted or phased or implemented. So, that's the overall rate increases. Beyond that, we have some recommendations for your sewer rate structure, to try to make the rates as fair and equitable as possible for all classes. The rate increases you've been doing for many, many years have just been across-the-board rate increases without looking at the underlying cost allocations to the different customer classes. So, we went through that exercise. Right now, your residential sewer customers pay a flat residential rate, which is very common. And most of the costs for wastewater treatment actually are fixed costs. Here in the city, it's staffing, it's capital. You don't have a lot of variable costs that vary whether someone puts a lot of wastewater in the system or not. And even at SBSA, that's true, although they recover costs based on flow and strength as a reasonably fair way of collecting costs from the member agencies. Your commercial rates are based on volumetric flow, based on metered water use. Customers with higher strength pay higher rates because it costs more to treat that wastewater. Industrial customers pay rates based on flow and separate costs for each type of strength for biological oxygen demand and suspended solids corresponding with each customer. You get your charges on the property tax rolls, which is the easiest thing to do, and it guarantees you 100% of your sewer billings because San Mateo County's on the teeter plan. They deal with the delinquencies. You get 100% of the billings. The rate structure modifications. One is, I know the hotel rates have been an issue here. You're one of, although you're not the only agency in the state that bills hotels based on the number of rooms, a flat residential rate. There are other agencies around the state that do that. You are the only one in the region that really does that. We took a look at the data, and what we were recommending was a transition from currently billing the hotel rooms, the full residential rate per room, to billing hotels volumetric rates like other commercial customers, based on a moderate strength commercial customer class. This would reduce the bills for all of your hotels. I mean, they're currently paying the same rate as a whole single-family home for every room. When we looked at the data, it looked like the hotels would see their rates go down 15% to 60% based on the structural change in the rates. You have about six or seven hotels out there right now. So, it is, you know, somewhat of an impact on your revenues. In the big picture, it's not a huge impact, and I think we put some detail in the report of what that worked out to be. Concurrently with that, we were recommending adopting a new moderate strength commercial class. Right now, you have kind of standard strength commercial institutional, which are low strength, and you've got a couple of high-strength classes, but there's really nothing in the middle. So, we were recommending adding this middle class for the hotels, which have restaurants and laundries and have moderate-strength wastewater. This class could also be used in the future if the city deemed it appropriate for other types of customers, mixed-use accounts where there's, you know, maybe a couple of restaurants and a number of commercial accounts, et cetera. The third rate structure modification, this one's going to be significant to some of your commercial customers and institutional customers. You currently have a minimum annual charge, which is pretty common. Right now, that minimum annual charge is equal for the non-residential customers. They pay those volumetric rates. But as a floor, the general commercial customers have to pay the full residential rate. A lot of the costs are fixed, I guess was the thinking. For whatever reason, when this was implemented, it wasn't applied to all the other types of commercial and institutional customers that you have. So, only your low-strength commercial customers have to pay this floor. If they use a little bit of waste, you know, a little bit of metered water use, they still have to pay the residential rate. So, two things we were recommending there. One is, really, only about 75% of the costs are fixed costs at the end of the day, maybe a little bit more. So, we were recommending reducing the minimum charge for commercial institutional customers from 100% of the residential rate to 75% of the residential rate, and at the same time, consistently applying that charge to all the non-residential customers, not just the low-strength commercial customers. So, what are the impacts there? The general commercial customers that have low flow now pay the full 100% would see a decrease down to 75% of the residential charge as their minimum. Other customers, if they're, you know, use a lot of water and therefore wastewater, wouldn't see an impact. But if they're a low-flow institutional customer, for example, or industrial customer, or a low-flow restaurant, instead of just paying for their 10 units per year or whatever it may be, they would then be bumped up to pay that minimum charge at 75% of the single-family charge. So, it's a lower charge, but it's applied consistently to all the non-residential accounts. The final thing we were recommending to do is, you have two high-strength commercial classes right now, ones for restaurants and bakeries, the other ones for, I think it's called like markets with garbage grinders and mortuaries. No one's charged in that second high-strength class. So, we were recommending, instead of trying to come up with classes for high strength that apply to certain customer types, combine them into one high-strength class that's a little more generic for high strength. And that concludes my part of the presentation. If you had questions about that rate structure before we move on to...
I have one question. One of the things I'm thinking about is, you know, we've had quite a few gyms pop up, gyms, you know, places where you go work out.
GYM, got it.
And that seems, I don't know what their flow rate would be on water. I would assume if, you know, if they have showers and so forth like that, they'd be fairly high. So, what would they pay?
Well, they, right now, would be in your general commercial class, which is kind of low-strength commercial class. The wastewater coming from these gyms is not particularly high-strength like it is coming from a restaurant. So, they would pay based on their, the volume of water, their metered water consumption multiplied by the kind of the low-strength standard commercial rates.
Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? I have some, but what, you guys asking any? Go ahead.
Definitely, Joe. So, I follow all these numbers in these slides that you've given us here, but I had questions about some of the numbers in the report that was provided. And I was also curious, the report was titled as being draft. Is there a final version coming out or...
There will. I mean, often, we have draft. We wanted to get council input before finalizing everything. I mean, on occasion, council says, no, we want to do this. And so, we want to make sure that the report was responsive to whatever came out of this draft presentation of the rates. You're not actually adopting any rates tonight. It's more to set the public hearing and come up with some rates to put in the Prop 218 notice that you can't exceed.
On page 14, and this applies to 14, 15, and 16, I just wanted to make sure, there's a column that says current and a column that says adjusted. And it's the same adjustment on all of these. So, I just wanted to have you explain a little bit what exactly has been adjusted here, because apparently, we're applying any percentage that we might select in the future to this adjusted column versus the current column.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
So, what does adjusted mean?
The adjusted rates is the rates that came out with no rate increase, just factoring in the rate structure adjustments and trying to derive the rates from the ground up to make sure that the rates were fair for all customer classes. So, we didn't just take your current rates and say, okay, add, you know, whatever percent of that. The first thing we did is looked at your overall revenue requirements, looked at what the loadings were coming in from the different customer classes, and, you know, came up with the uniform underlying costs for flow and strength that then get applied to the characteristics of each customer class, including residential. So, this was kind of the true-up, that Jay referred to it as, to make sure that the rates were equitable between all the customer classes, that they were based on the same underlying unit costs. And so, it changed the resident, so we're starting with that from scratch before we even do any cost escalation. So, it's the same rate structure adjustment that takes place under all the scenarios.
Can you put that on a little index card so if anyone asks me, I can just hand that to them?
Through the chair. Through the chair.
We're going to, you're going to really regret this adjusted. Go ahead. You're going to hit them first, and I'm going to hit them. Go ahead.
Well, I was, actually, I wasn't planning on hitting. I was going to ask just a simple question. So, are the, is the movement from the unadjusted to the adjusted applying basically the recommendations of restructuring the rates? So, for example, the adjustment for the hotels, the adjustment for shift to make sure that all commercial accounts pay 75% minimum?
Yes. That is part of it. And there's more than that, too. Even if you did no changes to your rate structure, these days, under Prop 218, you have to, you can't arbitrarily come up with rates. You have to demonstrate how the rates were developed and that costs were fairly allocated to different customer classes. So, even if you did no rate structure modifications, there still would be some adjustment. The ones here do factor in the proposed modifications as well as just generically deriving the rates from scratch.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought you were going to get them, but I am. But the reality is, is that the bill right now is $637, right? And the reality is, is that if we improve this, it's going to be, let's say, we did 12, 12, and 12, just to take an example, okay? The reality is, it's going to be $723.
With a rate increase.
With a rate increase. That's not 12%. That's 13.5 or 13. whatever. You can true-up or do, and I don't mean to jump on you.
No, you're exactly right.
But it's not, that's not right. That's not 12%. It's 13 and 1/2. And the next one isn't 15, it's 16.6. And that's what every one of us is going to pay, an increase of that percentage. I asked Mr. Walter this morning, because of course, on our form, we don't have the adjusted on page two or three. We didn't have the adjusted column, which of course, I still would have asked this question. But you can true-up and you can spin this any way you want to spin it. But the reality is, is that we're not improving a 12% increase if we take the first one. It's 13 and 1/2 each time. And the second thing is, it's 16.6.
For the residential customer.
For the residential customer.
You're exactly right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. This is not right. This is not correct.
The percentages aren't right.
They're correct. They're not.
What the percentages are, and I apologize for, yeah, we should have probably broken it out and showed the true percentages differently, but the way we, that 12% is the overall rate increase for all customers. Some customers might see 11.8. The residential will see 13.5.
The residential is going to see 13.56 if we adopt the first one. And the second one is they're going to show six, I just did it, 16.5 or 16.6. It's not right.
If I understand you correctly, what he's saying is that in aggregate, just like you're pointing at residential, there ought to be other customer classes in there, which will be less than 12%. So, that on average, it goes up by 12. Now, I agree with you that in terms of sending a letter out to people, it probably wouldn't be a good idea to put 12% referenced in a letter when they could do the calculation themselves and say it's going up at 13.6. So, there's a need to explain that. But that's what you're saying, it's the 12% overall increase.
As Ms. Clapper said, they better have a card printed up because I hardly understand it, you know, when we're listening to it here. I'm just saying that it's not right. So, I don't know how you want to, how we're going to do this, but if you do a 218, Mr. Rubens, I don't know, you can't put 15% or 12%. You can't do that. We're not going to raise the rates that much.
Well, the notice in the staff report does not reflect the percentages. It reflects what the actual rates will be, and those are what are going to be in the ordinance.
Okay.
So, the staff report, the staff report was talking about the overall 12%.
We're not going to tell anyone that we're going to raise the rates 12% if they own a home. We're just going to tell them that their new bill is $723.
Going to say, depending on what choice, what alternative you pick.
Right. But I mean, assuming we picked the, I'm just giving an example.
It'll have the dollar amount.
Just have a dollar amount.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure the council realized that it's not, and residential, I realize under the whole picture, but it's not correct residentially.
Because then, if you look at the, for the industrial, for the flow per 100 cubic
feet, that rate has actually gone down in the adjustment. So, why would that have gone down if everything else is being tweaked up for this adjustment?
Well, I think, what, because when we, the way it works, costs get allocated to flow and strength, and then those costs are divided by the actual flows and strength. So, some of the unit costs are going down and other unit costs are going up.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
You're getting into like the underbelly of the rate derivation. In order to derive the rates, you have to, and to make sure they're fair, you have to come up with what's the rate per unit of flow that gets applied to all customer classes fairly? What's the rate, I'll just say for wastewater strength, you've got a couple of components there, that gets applied to all customer classes fairly? And that's why there's a separate flow and strength rate that are then applied to the wastewater flows and loadings of each customer class. And yeah, it's not so easy to explain, Mick, but some customers are going to see a little less than 12% rate increase. For example, if you're a general commercial customer that only uses, you know, 20 units of water per year, you're currently paying that full residential rate. Under one of the proposed modifications, you're going to pay 75% of that residential rate. So, it's a zero-sum gain here. We tried to keep it so there wasn't a lot of adjustments between customer classes, but at the end of the day, there were some small adjustments that had to be made because we're losing some revenues over here, we're gaining a little bit over here, and vice versa.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Crowe.
Are we at discussion yet or are we still at questions?
We're just asking questions. I'm trying to understand this magical mystery tour here, so. Go ahead. You have a question?
No, I have a comment when we get to comments. Can I comment?
Well, why don't we wait for the comments? Just try to, try not to beat him up too much, but I'm doing a pretty good job already.
We want to make sure you're comfortable with us.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Mark. I mean, Mr. Olber.
That's okay. I answered either. Couple of simple things. There's a reference in the write-up that for those county sewer districts that we trans-ship their sewage for, we charge them 80% of the residential rate, the single-family contract. Yes. I'm just curious how we came up with 80%? Are we just doing it a favor for them or?
Well, they don't, they're doing their own sewer collection system and sewer collection system maintenance. The 80% they're paying is for transport through, and then your charge is for treatment as well.
I see. Okay. That makes some sense. Over the long, I was curious, you touched on this in your presentation. You talked about how over the long haul, the costs, the operating costs for water treatment facilities tend to escalate higher, at a higher rate than core inflation. And I thought that was an interesting comment, particularly over a very long period of time, if that holds up. It sort of begs the question to me of, are we doing enough to look for ways for increased efficiencies or whatever to offset that? In other words, why, why would we necessarily... or whatever to, to, to offset that? In other words, why, or why, why, why would we necessarily just accept that over a long period of time, yeah, the rates have to go up higher than the rate of inflation?
I don't wanna say that they have to. I'm just saying historically, utilities are very capital and labor intensive versus when you go out to, you know, if you're a consumer and you wanna buy a basket of goods, the price of, you know, Coke goes up, you can switch over and buy Pepsi. Maybe there's new technologies that have reduced the cost of producing some item. There's international, there's a lot of other things at play. So just historically, I'll say there's things that utility costs have tended to go up four to five percent a year historically compared to regular urban CPI, which is a little different. But there may be things the city.
Through the mayor, if, if I may, it, it, a big driving cost factor this tends to be the increased regulation that gets added so frequently to the requirements of the system. So you're creating whole new, you know, your, your nitriant.
Okay.
Nutrient collections is a perfect example of why your costs are so high.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. So in a sense, it isn't so much that, operating costs are certainly going up, but it isn't so much that the costs are going up for the same operations. It's that the nature of the operations is changing over time and getting more and more, more and more difficult to, to achieve. Um, this, this last question, at least for now, maybe for, for staff, I was curious, do we have any insight into why we never charged the minimum rate to all of those commercial and industrial clients that we never charged the minimum rate to, that we're now proposing to charge? Because they may be a little surprised to see something pop up on their bill.
Yeah. I, I don't think we do. I think we could try to research that in the record, but I think it goes back quite a ways in the history.
And it just got perpetuated forward.
Been perpetuated for.
It sounds like we should have hired your firm earlier to, to do the survey.
It's not uncommon that an agency, you know, for whatever reason, they set their rates many years ago, and then they don't think about it again, and they just keep rolling the, the rate increases forward without getting into the nitty-gritty of who's paying what.
Yeah. And so you, so you had the, you had a, a true-up in the first year, you call it, a true-up.
Yes. Yeah.
You have a true-up in the second year, too? Is there another adjusted?
Nope.
Or, or does, is this the reality, then?
That's the one-time true-up.
So just the one-time true-up. We don't have to true-up every single year. Okay. So it will be fifteen percent the second year, fifteen percent the third year. Okay?
But then, but then when we come back after the three years, there's probably gonna be a true-up when we do another rate study, right?
I don't necessarily know that you need to do that every time you do a rate study because now you have a kind of a foundation on what the rates are based. It's not some arbitrary assignment of cost to different customer classes. So that's gonna be, I think, a judgment call that, that staff can make in the future. But once you have kind of the rates derived from scratch, it doesn't mean like every time you update the rates, you have to go through that process again. So I'd envision next time would be more of just an across-the-board rate increase unless there were some specific issues that council wanted to address in the rate structure.
Ms. Crocker?
This, this whole discussion got me to thinking, are there other regulatory considerations being considered? In other words, are there some other impositions that we may expect? In, in three years, in other words, we may have these fifteen percent or twenty-five percent rate increases, and all of a sudden, there's a brand-new one that none of us have even thought about today that comes down and says, by the way, now we need another twenty percent because there's a new regulatory requirement.
It's hard to second-guess what's happening on the regulatory front, but we, we try to build that in on the SBSA side and, and you're, yeah.
To the best of my knowledge, there's nothing else out there brewing but regulators.
Regulate.
How do I, yeah. How do I put this gently? Uh, job security depends on them coming up with more regulations. So they seem to, to do that. Um, I don't think so. One thing the SBSA Commission's done to try and offset this to date is they've set the goal of being able to do pay-as-you-go for the next phase. So we're putting a million dollars a year away, which isn't a lot right now, but hopefully over the years, as we are able to taper off from this, we're able to put more money away. So the next time SBSA's in a situation where it needs to do a revamp thirty, forty years from now, they'll have some money in the bank. This time, we had zero in the bank when we started. So I think that will help offset at least some of that if new regulations do come in the future.
I think the, the big regulation that we're aware of right now is the nutrient collection, which has been talked about tonight. But one of, I, I know one of my big concerns, and I'm not sure what SBWMA has done to address this.
SBSA.
SBSA, I'm sorry. Um, right. Yeah, you're not garbage. You're the other stuff. Um, is stormwater. You know, to the extent that regulations are gonna start requiring us to treat stormwater, which, you know, it has, this would not be a radical concept in terms of being discussed. I know it's been discussed for a number of years. If we're gonna start pumping all the stormwater through the treatment plant, it's gonna, I'm sure, require some significant investment at the plant, and it's gonna require significant capital investment for this city and every other city that won't be covered by the sewer rates. You'll have to go to the NPDS rates, which means, at least as it exists right now under California law, you'll have to go to the voters. That is one of my big concerns that keeps me up at night.
Okay. Other questions? Thanks so much. Yes, Mr. Crocker.
So one of the things I'm concerned about is, okay, we've, we've done this commercial adjustment, and that's pretty much landed on the residential, looks to me like. That's why we don't have, you know, twenty-five percent's not really twenty-five percent. It's higher than that. And so my concern is, just like, you know, when we did some other rates recently, I think it was garbage, we got a predominant number of letters from folks who are fixed income. And I'm really concerned about those people because everything keeps going up, but their income's not going up. And in fact, if you look at what's going on in, you know, the healthcare and Medicare and so forth, their income's actually going down. So I wonder, A, how many customers do we have like that? Can we identify that? And is there anything that legally we can do with this rate structure to protect those people?
Good question. Um, the rate structure changes, I'll point out, it's only a one-point-something percent structural change on the residential. Not to say it's nothing, but it's not like there's a huge increase in residential rates. It's, it was like six dollars and change per year. Um, what can you do? Uh, there are some programs out there that some other utilities like PG&E can do. They've got a CARE program for low-income assistance. It's a little more challenging on the water and sewer side because we're under Prop 218, which requires that the rates charged to one customer group can't really be used to subsidize the rates for someone else. So many attorneys are uncomfortable using sewer rates as a source of funding for a low-income discount. But if there's a different source of funding that's not sewer rates, potentially you could use that for some sort of low-income discount program if, after weighing all the pluses and minuses, you decided that was the direction you wanted to go in.
There's nothing we can do with what's in front of us here. We'd have to come up with some other way of doing it.
This doesn't preclude you from doing anything like that, but there would need to be some source of funds. Some agencies have looked towards like late fees, um, other non-rate type of revenues. But there's a little bit of a gray area in the legal community, what you can or can't use to potentially fund this.
Through the chair, I think.
I prefer your legal counsel on it.
I, I think, if I remember right, it was triggered by the, the discussion we had with the garbage rates. But staff is working on bringing back some proposals on how to deal with that in that context. And if I remember right, many of those could in fact, or some of them at least, could be extended conceptually to cover stuff like this.
Could, could be. You have less, I think, ultimately, I mean, we'd have to study it, but ultimately, I think you would have less options here. We don't have late fees, for example.
You're right, you're on.
With the property tax. So, you know, so. Mr. Volpe, I was actually specifically thinking of the, the idea of potentially giving people the option of capitalizing some of this onto their, their, um, basically so they would, it, it, the, the costs would get deferred until a house was sold. That actually could be applied across the board to anything, if, assuming we can get it to work.
That's what I was thinking.
Other questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Other question?
I, I would, I wanna make sure I'm clear on this minimum annual charge for the commercial customers. Because if we do the billing through the property tax, if there's multiple customers on a piece of property, maybe I just don't understand the way the property taxes billed for commercial customers. Can there be multiple minimum amounts on one property tax bill?
That's, that's how lease agreements are set up. With your, your, some lease agreements include it's covering your property tax, and other agrees, lease agreements are such that you lease the property, you pay, you know, twelve hundred dollars a month for your space, and you get the property tax bill, and you pay it.
There's all kinds of ways.
So depends on the lease.
And you have a parcel that has three.
How does the county know how many customers are gonna get the minimum charge?
They don't care.
It's by parcel. It's by, it's by usage. It does.
Right. And you would tell them. You, you provide that information.
We tell them. Okay. Okay. That's.
Because this situation.
It's easier than I thought. Okay.
Regardless of the fact that you're making a change, this situation already exists because you already have the small tenants alongside sort of the medium tenants that are in two different categories already on the same property.
I figured it wasn't reinventing things. I just wanted to understand the concept so that, you know, that was something I didn't require a little card to carry with me at all times to understand.
So if we're gonna, we're gonna send out a 218 notice, and Mr. Jones owns a piece of property, Mr. Jones is gonna be told his new sewer rate, and it's not a residential piece. Let's say it's a commercial piece, because it's under your magical mystery tour here, whatever you did. They're gonna say, uh, your bill is now seven hundred dollars. In other words, it's gonna be absolute dollars to, to that commercial piece. So he's gonna...
It identifies the categories.
Right.
So it depends on what category you're building and falling in.
It's gonna be category seven, and that's gonna show that it's seven hundred dollars.
Well, but if you have multiple tenants, there are different categories that your property may fall under. And this is a situation that exists now.
Yeah. Okay. The point I'm trying to get at is, the person who owns the property pays a certain amount on his tax bill right now for this. He's gonna know that it's gonna go to another, you're gonna give him the, the absolute number's gonna be given to him. So he's gonna know that if it's four hundred yesterday, it's seven hundred. It may be, or vice versa. Maybe seven hundred yesterday, four hundred today.
Depending on the tenant he's got in.
Depending on the tenant. But that's all generated, somehow, some magic, somebody figures that out. And the 218 notice is specific in dollar amounts. No. Okay. Here I go.
It's specific to say what the rates are and what the charges are and what the minimum is. It doesn't further take that information and say, oh, by the way, here's your history of your bills for your last three years, and what will be next year.
I have a property, I own a piece of property. I have a top property tax bill. I pull it out. I paid this much last year.
It, it doesn't really, you know, you're sort of making a residential to commercial comparison without really, I think, intentionally doing that.
Right. Okay.
If you own a piece of commercial property, you may have ten.
Right.
Units on your property. You may have just one. And that's gonna, and depending on the mix of uses, it's gonna, it's gonna depend, and it's gonna fluctuate, and you're already gonna be used to that. So.
My point is, on your property, it's on your property tax bill. You own a piece of commercial property. You get a property tax bill for that.
Right.
Last year. I can pull it out. It says X dollars.
Based on the information that we'll put in the 218 notice, a property owner would be able to figure out what.
That's my point. I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna know that he paid four hundred last year, and he's gonna have to pay seven hundred this year.
You're, you're, yes. Without, the notice isn't gonna say you, you paid four hundred last year, and you paid.
No, it isn't gonna say that.
And it isn't gonna say you paid seven, you're gonna pay seven hundred this year.
Okay.
What it's gonna say is, for this category, you're gonna pay this. For this category, you're gonna pay this.
How's he gonna know?
And this commercial property owner is gonna have to run the calculation themselves in terms of what that means to them.
But that means they're gonna call the city and ask them what category they're in.
They already know that.
They already know that. I thought we were changing some of these categories.
Well, we're eliminating one that doesn't exist now, and we're, and we're creating.
I'm sorry to keep beating on this, but I, I know where the phone calls are gonna come, and I wanna know the answers so that I can give the answers, or just turn it right over to, to somebody at staff, which I don't, I wouldn't normally do. I just answer the question. So I'm just trying to understand what's gonna happen here. And I certainly can understand the residential. That's easy to, you know, straightforward. But I just wanna make sure that some, they understand it. Because I was told there's no percentages that are gonna be there. So there's gotta be some sort of a, a, a thing, a code, or a, this is what these guys pay, this is what this guy pays.
There's a, yeah, there's a table with categories.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to beat this, but I mean, it, I'm, somebody's gonna call. Because I know somebody's gonna be paying four hundred last year, and gonna be paying seven hundred this year. And that's a substantial amount of money, you know, for the.
The minimum annual charge is clearly spelled out on the notice. This is, I think, one of the more.
Okay. Well, it's been explained to me that supposedly the answer's gonna come. When I get the first call, I'll, I'll be happy to send it to them.
If I may, through, through the, through the mayor, um, one thing that maybe, I, I don't recall seeing it in the draft 218 notice, that may be a little bit of an additional complication, is we basically have said that there are a number of customers who historically could have and perhaps should have been charged the minimum, who were not. Okay? And so there may be, you know, I suppose one could put a, a line in, in the letter that said, oh, by the way, you may not have been charged something before, but you may be next year. That, that would be kind of a, a, a less-than-helpful way to do it. That, that's the one situation, I think, that's a little more complicated than just saying, here's the table. Because it's basically correcting an error in our billing system. And that is unique to each customer.
And unfortunately, this is the type of thing where if you did away with the minimum charge entirely, then all the other rates, your residential rates would have to go up to compensate for that revenue loss. So, you know.
I'm not saying we don't want to raise the rates, Alex.
You wanna put better.
What's gonna be sent out. Maybe I need to look at what's gonna be sent out. Somebody can give me a copy so that I can look at it and say, okay, I don't understand this. So how the heck am I gonna explain it to anybody?
I think perhaps if you turned to attachment one and looked at the table that's in the notice, it, it might provide some clarity to you in terms of how.
There's a couple of these things I really didn't even look at because I couldn't understand them. So, which, I apologize. What page is that, or?
Well, it's attachment one, so it's the second page of attachment one at the end of the staff.
Attachment one. I don't even have it.
It's right after Jay Walter and Jeff Volpe's signature page.
Okay. So this proposed sewer rate charges.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm a restaurant, ABC Seafood, and I get my bill, and I'm gonna know I'm a high-strength restaurant, or a moderate-strength restaurant, or a standard-strength restaurant, or what am I?
Restaurants are all in high-strength categories.
Okay. I'm just, I'm, again, I'm just asking the question because someone's gonna ask it of me, and I'm just trying to understand. And maybe I should do this offline, and I don't mean to beat you guys over the head with it, but maybe I just need to understand this a little better.
They're not gonna get this entire chart.
No, they're not gonna get the chart. And again, I'm just trying to understand.
You have to include the chart.
Yeah, but this is the notice. This is what they're gonna get in the mail.
This is exactly what it's gonna look like.
Yes. This is exactly what it's gonna look like. So it's gotta be very clear.
They'll get this chart.
Okay.
So they will see what they're paying now. They will see the next year and the year after.
That, that's the purpose of the.
That's my point. And I, I guess I didn't make it very well. They can see what they're paying now, ten dollars and thirteen cents. And you're gonna tell them that, I mean, but are, is it gonna be described in their thing? You are now a high-strength restaurant, or we moved you?
They're gonna know that.
Essentially, restaurants are all in that category.
Okay. Make it another, I'm sorry. I apologize. Throw another, another company, another company. I apologize. Throw me ABC Company.
The, the other one would, potentially, the, the other one would be hotels. So now a hotel.
Hotels are going down. They're not gonna call me. They're gonna call up and say, hey.
They're gonna be really happy.
They're gonna be happy.
But for them, they're gonna see that.
But you've got, you said there's seventy-five percent minimum. Some of these folks are gonna go up substantially. And I'm, I'm, here I am. I don't, I get this in the mail. Okay? And I look at my property tax bill, and I paid fi- five point five-three. So I'm assuming I'm gonna pay six point seven-nine. Okay? Next time.
But you may not look down in the chart and see the minimum charge because it's down at the bottom, almost like it's a different category.
We can do things to draw out that minimum by asterisking it, maybe putting it all, you know, you're subject to minimum charge.
Am I just, am I just completely off-base here? Or, I mean, you guys are gonna look at me like I'm, I'm crazy.
No, no, you're, you're bringing up a valid point that.
It's a bill that someone's gonna get. Shouldn't they under, be able to understand it?
They definitely should.
Well, let, let's clarify this, too.
Okay.
This notice is going to go out.
Right.
And essentially, it's going to let them know that we're gonna have the public hearing on May twenty-eighth.
Understand.
And so now's the time to call the city, find out what you don't understand, come to the hearing so that you can have this very clearly explained. So it's, this is not meant to have every detail to tell every rate payer, this is exactly where you're gonna end up. But it does, for the most part, it tells them based on those categories. And for the few that would, might change category, then those are the ones we wanna be able to talk to and explain to them before the May twenty-eighth hearing. be able to talk to and explain to them before the May 28th hearing.
There's about 1,000, ballpark, 1,01100 commercial, right?
In the, using the 90% factor residential, right.
So, there's a, to me, there's, there's 1,000 questions, but, okay, fine, I beat this, I beat this horse, I apologize for beating the dead horse.
I think what you're bringing up is a good thing that, in here, we can do a better job of clarifying that this minimum charge applied, instead of just putting it at the bottom of the notice, as, as Councilmember was just mentioning, we can put it in each section, and maybe note that prior to this date, only some commercial customers were charged this minimum charge going forward. Every, I mean, we could do something to help make it more clearly obvious to them.
Probably, probably won't get the calls this month, I'll get the calls when the property tax bill comes out, so, whatever, okay. Again, I apologize for monopolizing this, but it's just very frustrating that if, and I'm not saying I should understand it, but I can't, and if I can't, I'm just wondering, what does anybody else understand? So, the residential, easy to understand, the rest, not so much. Anyway, sorry for taking so much time on that. Any more questions of these gentlemen? And by the way, thank you very much, I apologize if I get a little excited, but I, I have a feeling I, I know what's coming eventually.
It, it is coming, and that's one of the more controversial things about this, but there's no easy way out of it.
It doesn't, no, I don't, I'm not worried about getting out of it.
Us, when all the rest of us.
I'd like to have it explained, that's all.
When all the rest of us get the calls, we'll just say, call the mayor, we don't know. He's gonna get more calls than we are.
I, I'm, I'm, I move that the letter not be sent out until Mayor Grisilli can recite all of this in his sleep.
Okay, all right, thanks, I, all right, thanks, guys, I appreciate your time.
A little bit more to this presentation that, that.
All right.
Jay was gonna finish up, but let me just fast forward.
All right, are we done here?
We have to talk about the.
No, I know, I know we do, but I'm just saying, are we done with?
Discussion of sewer rates has flushed out this room.
Let me, let me ask, is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none? Okay, folks, uh.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
If I might, again, in, just, just to take your attention to this slide. What we're asking the council to do tonight is approve this three-year rate increase in concept, and what we've recommended is the alternative C, as the, the basis for our Prop. 218 notice going forward, and that's the 25%, 20%, and 10% rate increase strategy. That's the alternative that we've recommended. We need you to set a public hearing date of May 28th, 2013, and, and authorize us to mail the 218 notices. The deadline essentially for the 218 notices is we need to have them in the mail by Friday this week, in order to have the 45-day period be finished before the May 28th timeframe, and for the council to introduce this ordinance amending the municipal code section regarding sewer service charges and fees.
Thank you for giving us the, the, what we have to do, and I appreciate that, okay? All right, um, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I ask one more, one more question?
Sure, I think, unless I interrupt you.
Uh, Mr. Walter, you say that you're recommending alternative C. So, let's say we make that recommendation, and because it is an in-concept motion, I assume, are we, we're not bound to that?
It can't be more than that.
It can't be more than that.
That's correct, that's the highest that it can be.
So if we were to approve alternative B, for example, we couldn't go more than that?
Right, that's correct, at this point, yeah, based on your action tonight.
Thank you.
If I may, I have a question about that, that just came to mind. Does that apply in totality to all three years, or does it apply to each individual year?
I don't know the answer to that question.
It's always highest.
It would, it, the, the notice is what binds you under the 218 process, so, the, the act, what you're doing is, you're sending out the notice that'll set your maximum rates for, during the entire three years. You will, at the, at the public hearing, you could set a different rate that is less than that, and, um, you might pick other options that staff is suggesting, and those would end up in your ordinance. Now, we're being asked to introduce the ordinance tonight, based upon the rates that are gonna go in the notice, but you could reintroduce the ordinance, um, and, on any rate that you set at the public hearing.
And the notice does include the, the three years, so the Prop. 218 notice does mention three years of rate increases.
But if we reintroduce the ordinance that night, then that kicks the, it kicks it, just kicks it down the road.
Well, the effective date of the ordinance would be pushed back, and I'm not sure, and perhaps Jay would know the, the deadline for when we need to get this to the county, county tax collector, which is.
Early August? We have a requirement by July 31 to have all this information submitted to the county.
Mr. Mayor, are we about to discuss the rates?
Yep.
May I ask Mr. Walter some questions then, about the three different rates?
Sure.
Scenario. Uh, Mr. Walter, this is gonna be, hopefully, an abbreviated version of what you and I went through this afternoon in your office. So, starting with alternative A, which has 12% each year increases for three years, that basically buys us paying for our share of the 60, or the $80 million. Actually, let me back up a little bit. That pays for our share of the $420 million, is that correct?
Yeah, the SBSA requirement.
The SBSA requirement.
The capital program.
Just the next few years.
Just the next few years.
Okay, now, that's, that's, that's critical, so, how many, of the $420 million, how much is that covering?
You have to go to the mic, because.
We've already done some of it, we've already paid some, or bonded some of it.
Yeah, some of it's already, you're already paying with bond payments for 2009 bonds and 2008 bonds. Other funds, SBSA is already secured from the state revolving fund loan program. The debt service on that doesn't start hitting till a year after the project is complete, so it's commitments that have been made, these payments are coming to you, they haven't hit you yet, they will be coming.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, what I need actually are just some simple numbers. What I need to know is, of the $420 million, how much is the additional 12% gonna pay for? How much is it gonna fund? And how much has already been funded by things that we've already agreed to?
Estimate it, I mean, you can.
Yeah, no, you're right, it was gonna have to be an estimate.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, but hopefully a good one. No, I'm serious, I mean, you know, it's not, it's proportional to me, I mean, maybe I should try it, I mean, it's proportional. So, how much have we already committed? We've got a 60, how many, a $60 million bond, and a, and a 20, or whatever, and?
Well, about 60 million of projects plus 35, so that's 60, 70, 95, 105. You, you've already financed about 105 million.
Okay.
You're not paying for it yet, but it's already been financed.
Right, the next three years.
The next three years.
It's gonna be high.
Are, um.
Got the 80 million first?
Yeah, I don't know if I have all the right tables here to answer your question, here we go, table four, yes, here we go. There is a table in the report that kinda details all the SBSA project costs, big picture in how much has been financed so far, table four from the report, and looking at that, if we go out to 2013, 14, there's gonna be another roughly $100 million of projects to be funded. Not all bond-funded, some of that's gonna be state revolving fund loan-funded. SBSA went through every project, all of them, and figured out which ones were good SRF candidates, which they can get the state revolving fund loan for. So, there's 100 million in 2013, 14 that's going to be funded. In 2014, 15, another 133 million. To make it even more confusing, these are cost-inflated dollars, because we built in 3% cost inflation.
Don't worry about that.
So, about two, SBSA needs to fund about 200, we'll call it 250 million in current dollars over the next three years.
Those three, so in the, the last year, there's only about 17 million dollars, you said 100 million, 133?
Yeah, back out cost inflation, yeah, call it 250 million.
Okay.
Doesn't mean, yeah.
Here's, here's what I, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is, is, uh, construct a relationship between the percentage increase at this floor, the 12%, and what it's buying. So, my takeaway from this little conversation we've had is that a 12% increase for, in each of the next three years, basically buys me my share of $250 million worth of funding of projects.
It's unfortunately more complicated than that, which is, I think it's gonna be hard to come up with a number you're looking for. The, the reason is, the debt service phases in over time. So, the fact that you raise your rates for the next three years.
Okay.
It's enough to meet the debt service requirements, but maybe at the expense of some of your own capital projects.
All right, well, let me, let me, I'm afraid, I'm afraid we're not gonna be able to do what I wanna do, which will probably end up having me vote against something that I might otherwise vote for. Um, what I would like to understand is, what are the rate increases necessary to pay for the additional cost obligations, both that we will get from SBSA over the next few years, and the projects that we wish to do? Um, and that's it, okay? And, and fleet, and increases in operating costs. In other words, basically, my, my understanding of these three different alternatives is, the alternative A buys us a sort of de minimis floor, okay? Doesn't really solve all of our problems. In particular, it doesn't allow Mr. Walter to go out and start fixing the pipes that are having problems in San Carlos, but it's a floor. An extra 3% buys me something else, an extra percent on top of that buys me more. My sense is that particularly alternative A actually pre-funds a bunch of things. In other words, it, it takes money from sewer rate payers sooner than we actually are gonna be shipping the money out to either an engineering firm or to SBSA to pay for stuff. And my personal bias is, I'd actually like to see what the, what the rate increases look like just to keep us even. So, if costs go up by $3 million next year, what do rates have to go up by to raise an extra $3 million?
That's what our rates show. We're, we're not collecting anything in advance. What's happening, we develop these financial models which are.
I'm sorry, but I can't possibly accept that with alternative C. 25% increase, there's no way that that's not pre-funding.
Alternative C. Excuse me, hold it, excuse me. We need a motion to extend this meeting.
So move.
Till 11 o'clock.
Till 11 o'clock.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay.
Mr. Ober, if, through the mayor, if I may? I would propose, I, I, I see what you're saying, and, and I don't disagree with you. However, I would, uh, I, I would suggest that we do, similar to what Ms. Clapper suggested on the, on the garbage rates, which is, just take the higher figure right now, and send the notices out, and then we can work out all the details and concerns, like what you're suggesting, when we actually adopt the rates. But it's better to go in with something that's gonna, to, to use a phrase, smack somebody upside the head, and say, look at what you've got coming, and if you don't like this, we need to hear from you. And then we'll hear from people, and we can adjust these rates, as long as we don't go higher than what's in the notice.
And if I, if I could respond, I, I, I actually, uh, you're, you're absolutely correct, and that is certainly a solution to the quandary that I'm facing, sitting here. Of course, the price of that, potentially, is an awful lot of agita out in the community that may be unnecessary, okay? And, and it's.
The garbage did that much to that many people.
One at a time, one at a time.
But, but that is a solution, I, I would grant you that. And if that's the best we can come up with tonight, then that's fine. And it may, may very well be, because it sounds like the, the analysis is not structured in a way to be able to answer my question on the fly.
I have a question of Mr. Rubens, please. You said we cannot raise it, so if we said we adopted C, and it's 25, 20, and 5, right? 25%, 20%, and 5%?
And 10.
And, I'm sorry, and 10%?
Right. And actually, that was sort of where I was going at first, just a few minutes ago, but the reality is, they're numbers, not percentages.
Okay, so, again, well, well, whatever they are.
I walked into 25.
The numbers will change if you take 15, 15, and 15, won't they?
That's correct.
So, so my question is, because it's a three-year deal here, the fir, let's assume we took 25, 20, and 10, or five, whatever you said. Then we said, well, you know what, we wanna do 15, 15, that works, because it's underneath the 25 and the 20, but the 15's higher than the 10.
But, but 15 in the third year from a dollar percentage is less.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
You would have.
It's a smaller dollar amount.
Just asking the question.
Well, keep in mind the structure of how you're gonna be approving this, is, the notice goes out with set numbers for the different rate categories.
Not percentages, just dollars.
Not percentages. The ordinance, which is what's gonna be the enforceable, enforcement mechanism, that's the end game of what you're approving, the ordinance will have specific numbers, so if you are, pick a specific number that's lower than what your notice says, and put it in your ordinance, you'll be able to do that.
You're in good shape.
You just can't put a number that's higher than in the notice.
I apologize, I'm missing the point on the third year. I, I, why can't, why won't it be higher?
Because if you look at the chart, it's, 1,066 is the highest amount, and that's, that's the 25, 20, and 10.
Everybody understands what I mean, that's fine.
Well, because you're not, you're, you're dealing in percentages in your head, but that's, but the, but the notice is dealing in dollars.
Everybody understands it, that's good.
All rate, I just wanna say one thing, all these three rate options are all roughly balanced budgets, there is no pre-collecting. The difference is, and they all are gonna position you to be able to fund the SBSA debt service as it rolls in, and your consent decree projects, which are, you know, cash outlays. The difference with the 25% is, that generates more funding right up front for pays-you-go capital projects, for the, the master plan, high priority projects. An additional 10% a year is about an additional $1 million roughly, so it only generates about $1 million or so of additional revenues out of the gate.
I, I apologize, but, but I'm starting to sound like you.
I know, it's bad.
The, uh, we should, uh, perhaps there's an opportunity for us to discuss this offline, but that math doesn't check out with the stuff we've talked about before, because, at least not, unless I've totally misunderstood it, uh, when I've talked to Mr. Walter about this, last year we increased rates 6%.
Mm-hmm.
And that bought us an extra $2 million a year roughly to work on the capital improvement projects. So, 10% has gotta raise more than $1 million a year, it has to, just has to.
Well, your total service charges this year, that you've actually billed on the county tax rolls, are just about exactly $10 million. So, 10% of that, almost exactly $1 million.
There's a disconnect between what he found out and what you're saying, so there's a disconnect, so he's gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure that out, okay? I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong, Alex, there's a disconnect somewhere, so.
And I wanna apologize, I think what we tried to do in this presentation is boil it down and keep it streamlined, as opposed, maybe this is the group that would have wanted the more detailed walkthrough of everything, because you're really, you're asking good questions and getting into the details, would you be commended for that, so.
Are we, uh, uh, should we perhaps have a motion?
Well, we can have a motion, that'd be good. And we can discuss that, yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm going to, uh, follow on with my colleague, Mr. Grocott's suggestion. I'll move that we adopt alternative C, which I guess Mr. Rubens means that I'm, since that's what the resolution's based on, I'm just adopting the resolution, is that right?
What you're, you're taking three actions tonight. What you're, you're taking three actions tonight. The first is to-
Send the notice.
I'm trying to find it here, excuse me. Authorize the sending out of the notice, setting a public hearing for May 28th, and then introducing the ordinance amending the actual dollar amount rates that is going to end up in our municipal code.
I'm not seeing, where are the, okay, there's the ordinance, the last one, the ordinance.
See, I'm not seeing it either, so.
The first two actions are, it looks like they're just simply motions to set the public hearing on May 28th.
That sounds easy enough. I move that we set the public hearing on May 28th.
We have to do these separately, Mr. Rubens?
They should be different motions.
Okay. So there's a motion to set the public hearing for May 28th, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rubens, the next one is the-
The next item is authorizing the setting of the notice, the Prop. 218 notice.
Now, if I can engage in a little bit of dialogue with you, the, that one is complicated by the fact that I think there's been a lot of editorial input from the DIAS and more lurking there. So how do we encompass that?
Well, the authorizing the setting of the notice is going to be, this encompasses the choices that you have, either the recommended numbers that will end up in the notice. If you want to pick a different one of the recommendations, those could end up in the notice. And so the important fact about the notice is we want to set the parameters of the rates that you, that you're willing to consider at that public hearing in May.
So-
Will we refer to it by the alternative, then?
Well, you could refer specifically, if the council is intending to go with Option C in setting, in sending out the notice of the proposed rates, you could just reference the notice of hearing in the packet.
Attachment 1.
It's attachment 1 in the packet.
The only question I have about that is, again, relative to the editorial input, not all of which was related to which particular option we chose. How do we indicate that we want staff to, in the past, we've said work with the mayor to-
Let me try to summarize, because I believe there was one major element that was discussed as it related to the notice, and that was the issue of the 75% minimums and how that would apply, and the suggestion from the consultant that that be made clearer in the notice. So that would be our attempt to make that clearer by at least adding it, adding that language to each of the categories in which that could apply. And, you know, anything else we can come up with to try to make that issue clearer? That was the main, I think, modification to the-
I think I may take a slightly different approach. We'll see whether this works. So I would be moving that the council direct staff to circulate a 218 notice substantially in the form as shown in attachment 1 in the agenda item, which is based on Alternative C. In the staff report, here's the kicker, subject to the notice being acceptable to the mayor. I'm not trying to pick on you, it's just I think we need one person to look at it, and there may be no second for this, so maybe it'll die. Do you see where I'm getting at, Mr. Maltby? It's rather than try and delineate the specific things, it's delegating to somebody else who's been part of the discussion.
Yeah, and what I heard your motion saying was that the substantive issues, in other words, the cost structure type issues, are being set by your motion, and the descriptive issues associated with the letter would be subject to the mayor and staff agreeing that that's what we want to put out.
That is exactly my intent.
Got it.
And just one friendly clarification, it's, the motion is to mail it, and I think you used a different word than mail the notice out.
Let me amend my motion to say that we direct staff to mail out the notice.
And we need to mail these by Friday.
Does that work for you, or do we want to pick somebody else?
Tomorrow's fine. I'll do it tomorrow.
As I were.
Because I'm going to do it Wednesday.
As long as the mayor agrees, I second it.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yes. I'm running the meeting, huh? Any further discussion?
I just have a comment regarding the notice that I would prefer to see it not talking about facing a number of financial challenges, but just referring to facing challenges, because I think the focus, the reason we're increasing the rates is because of challenges we have in being able to provide an adequate system.
Yeah, the words, we could change the words around. It's not really a, it's challenges to the improvement of the system or something like that.
If other council members don't have a problem with that, that's something that I had mentioned to the city manager. That's part, okay. The second thing I would like to request, Mr. Mayor, is that in the first item here that's listed, the $420 million of rehabilitation, I think that's a bad item to start off with first, because as we were talking about earlier, we're not talking about a rate increase that will cover all $420 million, because number one, that's not our share.
That's right. It should be our share.
But we're also not talking about covering all of our share of the $420 million anyway, so I, when we keep coming back with more rate increases in future years, I don't want people to think, well, just because we're paying for this $420 million in the next three years, it shouldn't have to go up anymore, because it's still going to be, we're still going to be paying for it in subsequent years. Does that make sense? What I'm saying-
Let's just say what our share is. But since we're responsible for 64 million.
But you know what, but-
But I don't think that the rates we're talking about fully fund that $64 million.
They do not.
That's what we've been saying, and I think that is incorrect to have that in here.
Well, I agree with you, and it is confusing and potentially misleading if people are actually to look at back in the future of what we write here. So we ought to tighten that up.
Those are just the two things that I would ask that you take a look at.
We had a motion, but I didn't hear a second.
Oh, he seconded it.
I second it. But I also have a question.
And then we went off and did discussion.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
All right. This may have been answered. You mentioned that some hotel rates are going to go down. Is that right? Or all of them are going to go down?
All the hotel rates.
If I'm a hotel owner and I look at this, how do I know that? Do I, by just looking at that subnote 2, does that, is that basically saying that my rate's going to be less? I mean, it's not clear to me. I don't see a line that says hotels will pay a lower rate. Here's what I'm paying now as a hotel, here's what I'll pay next year and the year after.
Right. But a hotel owner would have had the property tax bill from the prior year, which had the assessed amount. And it would, it would show his category as residential per room, and so that's his amount that he has to pay. Now he shows up in a new category, in that commercial, and it's going to be based on his water usage. So that's how he would know that his rate will be less.
It's going to say that in his specific thing? It's going to specifically say in a separate paragraph that you-
No, it's not going to. It's going to be intuitive, because a hotel owner knows what he paid last year and what category he was in.
So he's going to see, and I just saw the word, includes hotels. So he's going to see commercial, he's going to read hotel, he's going to see that rate.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
If I can make a brief editorial comment, that too may be something that you want to, word spent a little bit, no, no. Just because, given that we are, given, you know, some of the actions that we're involved with, that the hotel owners have surfaced, being overly clear with them is probably helpful.
In addition, we will, because of the other issues we're working with on the hotels, we will be reaching out to them individually. So this isn't going to be an issue for the hotel owners. They're going to know exactly what's going on before they even get the letter.
We want at least one group to like us.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
A second.
And there's a second. Further discussion? Okay, well, I guess we'll vote.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Electantly, yes. I don't like the high rates, but that's another story.
And then the last action is the introduction of the proposed ordinance. We have it scheduled, I think, to be adopted at the same evening as the, as the public hearing, but it's, it seems the timeline that we have, it's possible that they don't have to be, it doesn't have to be adopted at the same hearing, but I think it's desirable that it be adopted at the same hearing.
Through the chair, do we need to indicate that when we introduce the ordinance?
No, you don't, no.
I'm confused about that, though, because if we, if we were to go with the rates that are in example C, or whatever it's called, but then we ultimately come up with, you know, 13.5% per year for three years, then what?
You would have to reintroduce the ordinance at whatever, whatever rate level you approve.
So what's the point?
Well, there would be some timing issues because of the effective date of the ordinance. You mean, what's the point of introducing it tonight?
Exactly, because in all likelihood, what we just said tonight is, let's go for the higher amount, so we've got this umbrella to work under, but we're darn well not, there's no way I see this council approving rates of 25, 20, and 10.
Well, I don't know, it looks like our consultant wants to clarify something.
Maybe, unfortunately, you adopt rates by ordinance, so you have to have these two readings and go through this process. Some other agencies do it by resolutions.
We know that.
Things could never apply.
Maybe what you could do is have it, the ordinance reference a not-to-exceed amount. Are you allowed to do that? Can you have the ordinance reference a not-to-exceed amount, so even if you adopt something lower, ultimately, it doesn't, no?
We have, the ordinance has to be, but it's just a timing issue. If you have to reintroduce on the 28th with a different set of numbers, what will happen is you'll have to adopt at the next meeting in June, and then you'd have 30 days, so we'd still meet the July 31st deadline.
But through the chair, to follow up on what Mr. Grokot said, that almost argues for me, why bother introducing it tonight?
I would argue back, why not? What would be the reason not to?
Sends a false message.
Well, but it's just an introduction. It doesn't, it shouldn't send any message at all. It just starts the clock.
Public doesn't know that.
Well, one of the problems I had is that I wasn't planning on just doing this Trojan horse, I was planning on setting rates tonight. And that, I'm still planning on, but I voted for this other, you know, I went along, and now I'm not so sure I want to go along, because it doesn't make any sense to me. Let's sit here and figure out what rates we want, and we'll vote on them.
Sure.
You know, and that's it. End of conversation. And if we don't have enough information, then we'll say, no, we're not going to do anything.
Right.
And we're not going to mail it out Friday, then.
Right. And really, and just to be clear, you're, because I'd like to clarify the language you just used, you would be talking about being specific about the rates that you'd like to mail out as the notice for the 218 hearing.
Which is the way we've always done it.
That you would set, because you're not setting the rates tonight, and that's what you said.
Well, the other part of the problem, let me, let me just speak to this specifically. We've always done one year at a time. We haven't?
Not always, no.
Well, I guess in my time we have, or at least, if we haven't, I certainly missed it along the way.
Right. I think early on in your tenure.
And I think that's compounding the issue here, I think, at least for this council person. It's causing a problem, and so that's part of my frustration.
The last time the city considered a rate increase this large in the neighborhood of 25, 20, and I think 15 or 10, it was a three-year rate increase. I want to say, if you look at the chart, the one with the two lines that are diverging, and you see the big spike up, that was a three-year rate increase.
That was a three-year rate? Okay, I stand corrected. But anyway, I'm just saying, tonight it's causing an issue for me. Maybe it didn't then, that night, I don't know. Okay, so we have, we voted on a motion, we headed the higher rates, so if somebody want to change it, can we, Mr. City Attorney, can we change what we just voted on?
You mean the notice?
Yeah.
The content of the notice?
Yep.
You'd have to have a motion to reconsider that item, and then have that, have that motion, and then you could take it up again.
Okay. I'm just asking the question, because we voted, and I'm not sure if everybody wants to continue with that vote. So if somebody wants to introduce that, or we'll go to number three, whichever folks want to do.
I'm perfectly willing to have some additional discussion this evening that will lead to the May 28th, but I don't find any need to change the notice that's going out. That's my feeling about it. But, you know, I would, I'd be perfectly willing to, you know, talk about some other tiered rate that is lower than-
We're going to be talking about it again, because why, to talk about it twice? Just, I mean, I'm-
Reason-
If it would help you to be more settled on what direction we're going to go in.
Well, I know, I know, I'm not going to, I know what, who should I'm going to-
Mr. Mayor, if I might, the idea that you would want us to explore different rate structures or tiers, now would be the opportunity to give us that instruction, so that between now and May 28th, we may have additional options to consider. That would be setting up rates differently, approaching it, and, you know, we took this as we looked at three different strategies, and so if there's some variation on that, now's the time to give us that instruction, because we have time between now and the public hearing to evaluate it. Where I was going with, with things, when I suggested what I did, and we voted on it, was I was figuring our bulldog was going to go in and meet with staff and hash out these details that he's concerned about. I'm concerned about him, too, but I don't have the time to, like Mr. Ober does. I'm not in that kind of position where I can go in and meet with staff as often. So I was hoping Mr. Ober would go in, nail these things down, and then that's what staff would present to us, and we would have a better idea where to set the rates based on what these concerns are. Because I share Mr. Ober's concerns. I don't really understand the details of them, but I'm sure they'll be flushed out by his coming in, spending time with staff, questioning, and then whatever presentation we get. And that's why I'm not comfortable with introducing an ordinance, because I know darn well that, or I'm pretty darn sure, that what we did tonight on that, the notice, is not going to be the actual rates. They will be somewhere, something underneath those amounts. And I hear you saying the same thing, so I'm counting three votes right here that-
There's actually an extra 1.4, 1.5% on top of those rates.
Exactly.
So that's the thing that bothers me, is it's really not the rates.
So now I'm counting four votes that say we're not going to be at those rates. And that's why I don't want to introduce the ordinance. It seems like it's, it's just-
218's got to say something.
Well, it will. We already voted on that.
He's talking about the ordinance.
But we don't need to introduce the ordinance, because we can introduce it the night that we approve the rates at the 218 hearing. And we'd still come in on time if I understand-
And again, you do not have to introduce the ordinance tonight. So that would be an option. You know, I would probably disagree with the assessment that introducing the ordinance is going to send any sort of a message. What's going to send the message is the fact that we're sending a letter to everybody's home. That's going to send the message. The ordinance is going to be irrelevant, in my opinion. So if, you know, if you want to introduce the ordinance, that's certainly, that is not approving the rates by any stretch of the imagination, it's simply moving the ball down the road in case you do. If you don't, you don't have to. But again, it requires a second vote of all of you anyway to adopt it.
Right. I guess the point is, if we introduce the ordinance and we change the rates, we're going to have to reintroduce it anyway. So I, and I, at least, I'm not voting for this. I'm telling you right now, I'm not voting for it. That's one. Count two, maybe three, I don't know. But I don't see unanimity that we're all wonderful, so why bother? I mean, it's just, I don't know. But whatever, it's up to the council.
Well, I think maybe rather than debate it, somebody could make a motion or not make a motion, and we could see what the vote is.
One motion could be to table it to a future meeting, one motion could be to approve.
I move that we table the introduction of the ordinance to a future meeting.
Does it have to be date-specific, or are you good on that? Okay?
Second.
Okay, moved the second to table the introduction of the ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Rubens, on this? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry to beat the blank out, but not too good, as they say. All right, moving on. 10C, consideration of introducing an ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending Section 2.08.010 of the municipal code regarding regular meeting dates falling on a holiday.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is another cleanup ordinance, and it's being driven partly by an upcoming holiday. The May 28th meeting would fall on a holiday, and I just thought it would be prudent to clean that up and specify in our ordinance what happens if your regular meeting day falls on a holiday.
Okay.
It's not in our current code. There was a, as stated in the staff report, there was a government code that automatically provided for meetings the day immediately after a holiday, but that was repealed many years ago. So I'm recommending that you approve this, just to clarify our municipal code, and this happens about twice a year. And there are some actions that must occur at a regular meeting, like adoption of ordinances and setting pay and things of that nature. So there's a valid reason for this change.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I don't have any questions. I have, when we get to comments, I, discussion.
Okay, we have a motion on this, please.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we, is it adopt?
Introduce.
Yeah, or introduce ordinance number...
1459.
1459, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending section 2.08.010 of the municipal code regarding regular meeting dates falling on a holiday.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah. So the concern I have with this, it looks pretty straight up, but the, I'm concerned about the, what I labeled here, the "or" language. And the "or" language is, when you read the actual ordinance, it says, whereas the City Council desires to amend, provide that regular meeting falling on a holiday may occur on Tuesday of the same week. And then it has "or" as designated by the City Council. And my concern there is this. There have been times where the council's been accused of moving things around on purpose, knowing that vacations or holidays are coming up, and we're going to put this, you know, monumental decision on the week that people are starting to go away for, you know, the Christmas holiday, or New Year's holiday, or whatever. And I think, so I think if we're going to do this, I understand it only happens twice a year, but I could just see it happening where there's a holiday, and then we designate that it's, the meeting instead of being on a Tuesday is going to be on a Wednesday or a Thursday, and it throws somebody off who really wanted to be here for whatever monumental decision we were going to make. So I just think it should simply say, so people know, so the public knows that when we have a holiday, it happens on the Tuesday. And if it doesn't happen on the Tuesday, it's because we've taken a special action to move it, and then that's not a regularly scheduled council meeting. It should be, to summarize, it should be something the public can rely on, know, and not, not have to hear what happened at the previous council meeting, or when, when we designated some day for our meeting.
And, Mr. Rubens, the reason it's written this way is to, to give us the flexibility, for whatever reason, that we might have to have a meeting on another day.
Yeah, I think that the, the most common example that I was thinking of when I was drafting this is if there happened to be a situation that the Tuesday, there wasn't a quorum, you know, maybe someone was on vacation or something. And so at the prior meeting, you would have to, by motion, say, oh, we've got a quorum problem on the Tuesday, we're going to set it for Wednesday or Thursday for that week. It has to be in that same week, though.
And that's the very thing that I'm concerned about, is because somebody who's really trying to follow an issue, and it's happened in the past. I remember when we were dealing with Pacifica Cienega, and we kept moving things around, and there were people that were furious at us because they weren't going to be there, and they didn't know that we had moved it.
Right. But if we don't have a quorum, what are we going to do? Then it doesn't become a regular meeting. I mean, I'm just trying to weigh the, weigh the, weigh the two things. I, I hear what you said, so, anyway, it's a valid point. I'm just, I think the flexibility is this, that we're allowed to meet all those days. And, anyway. So, what else? Folks, what do you want to do?
Yeah, because I think it's, it's important to ensure as many of the council members be there as possible, just as much as, as many of the members of the community. So, kind of between a rock and a hard spot, and how do you make sure that all of those things can happen?
Well, you can go ahead and have the meeting, of course, but you wouldn't, there may be some things, as Mr. Rubens points out in his report, there may be some things that you're froze out from doing, like introducing an ordinance, for instance, so...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Could I have another motion, please, for extension?
Mr. Mayor...
We have two items to talk about, off the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, the, the item on the consent calendar that I brought up, can we postpone it? Because personally, I'm a little bit tired, and I don't feel like going through it.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. We still, okay, we got four minutes to do the other one, then.
Mayor, if...
Or not. No.
If I may, I would like to actually respond to that, to postponing it, because there, that would result in a delay in potentially beginning recruitment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, that's fine. I'm just trying to listen to everybody at once when they all talk, so, that's great. Okay.
Well, let's see if we can do them both in four minutes.
Good luck. Okay, go ahead. First, we got the minutes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend the meeting until 10 after 11.
Second.
May all is in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, we have the minutes.
Through the mayor, we have provided some redlined minutes with comments that we received from residents asking us to make those amendments to the minutes on Friday. You've been provided with those. Staff has had the opportunity to review those changes in the minutes. We don't have any issue at all with them. We would recommend you approve the amended minutes for, I believe it's the March 18th.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve item 8D, pardon me, 9D, adopt minutes of March 18th, 2013, Special Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay. Last item, L, classification specification.
Okay, well, I was, I'm concerned about this because, number one, we're going to be doing budget up the road here a ways, and my concern is that we're, if we were to approve this, we're signaling two things. One, assistant city manager, that position is not, doesn't look like to me anyways, it doesn't look like it's crossed out. And so that's still there, and then we're adding assistant to the city manager, and I just, you know, if we create this, that sends the message to the city manager that we're okay with this position, we're okay with this rate, and we should expect this going into our budget. And I'm not prepared for that myself.
But we have a two-year budget, right? So we've already identified what the next year's budget's going to be, so whatever's done has to fit within the budget, doesn't it?
Well...
Wait a minute. We, we, let's not talk among ourselves. You have a question for staff? Why don't we ask that question to staff?
No, I wasn't asking you a question.
No, I, but she was.
Oh, okay. All right.
So if, if I'm understanding correctly, currently we have an assistant city manager position that is budgeted, and so that means funds are set aside, and any budgeted position, the city manager has the authorization to fill. So having a class specification on the books that is not budget approval for any, so this, creating a class spec doesn't increase headcount or allow you to go out and hire an additional position, but you can't recruit for a position you don't have a class spec for. So in other words, today, we've got our assistant city manager is retiring. So my choices are basically three. I could choose not to fill the position at all, which I'm not going to choose. I could choose to do, to begin an assistant city manager recruitment because we have a class spec and a salary range for that, and I could choose to begin a deputy city manager recruitment, or, because we have a class spec and a salary range for that. Even though we haven't had a deputy city manager in a number of years, that class spec exists as a position in the city. So I could do that. What I couldn't do is begin to a recruitment on this lower-level position of assistant to the city manager, that I would like to underfill the assistant city manager position with moving forward. So I wouldn't have the ability to recruit for the lower-level position. And what I'd like to do is begin a recruitment before, you know, to hopefully have maybe a few weeks of overlap before the incumbent who's been here for 20-plus years...
Mr. Malpe, I apologize, but I didn't think that was the question that she asked. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, this is getting to the gist of what I was asking. Thank you for clarifying.
I think in the very beginning, the question was, is it, it is budgeted. It's in, it's in, it was approved by the council in both years. Now, that doesn't mean that the council in the mid-cycle review that's coming to you next month couldn't amend the budget. You certainly could amend the budget. I've never gotten the impression from a majority of the city council that there was an intention to reduce the city manager's office from three people to two. I have understood that there was some discussion about what type of position to fill, but not that there wouldn't be a position at all. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how I would run the office with just Nakaya and I.
So if I may ask a question, adding this position gives you more flexibility?
It allows me to recruit for a lower-level position than I currently could recruit for. So yes, it provides more flexibility, provides the potential to save up to about $100,000 a year over the cost that's in the budget right now for the existing position.
Through the chair, just to be clear, I think what you meant, Mr. Collins, is adding this position, this class description, not the position. Adding a position would be...
Yes, that is one of that. Thank you. Adding the class.
Okay. Other questions? Comments?
Comments.
Or a motion?
I think Mr. Grokot had a comment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grokot?
Well, further, the concern I have is looking at the amount, which is essentially